Check, one, two. Check, check. Check. Mic check. Check, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Mic check, one, two, three, four. Test, one, two. Check, one, two. Mic check, test, one, two. Check, check. Check, check.
Yes, the one coming out of the record.
Mic check, test, one, two. Test. Check. Check, 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 one, two, test, one, two. Mic check, test, one, two. Test, one, two. Check. Test, one, two. Mic check, test, one, two. Test. Mic check. Test, one, two. Check, 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 one, two. Test. Mic check, test, one, two. Test, one, two. Mic check, test, one, two. Test, one, two. Mic check, test, one, two. Test. Test, one, two. Mic check, test, one, two. Check. Mic check. Mic check. Mic check.
Larry, our timing was just a little off.
That was Jordan who came through that point, not me.
Mic check, test, one, two. Now, check.
The device that sends out the audio from that, that earpiece is not working right. It's just like it stopped working in the background. Last time we were here, we're fine, today it's not working.
Okay. So, I have no earpieces tonight?
Yeah, I can't get it to work, yeah.
Keep working on it. And I'll call the meeting to order.
Let me pull it up, let me pull up the stream.
So, there will be times I might not be able to hear what people say.
Oh, okay.
Because they don't have an earpiece for me.
Oh, okay.
So, I'm going to need you to help out. Hey, it's just what happens with technology. There we go. You know what they just said? Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Those of you that are able, please rise for our Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Are there any additions to the agenda? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as it is written. We have a motion from Mr. Raz, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Mrs. Walcott. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The agenda has been adopted. Jordan, do we have any comments from the public?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have one comment that has been submitted by Bobby Walton of Davison. And the subject of her comment is Board Management Leadership and Policy.
Okay. In accordance with Section sixteen forty of the meeting procedures, Board Policy states that the board chair or person shall invite the public to address the board. All citizens who wish to address the board or wish to communicate with the board in writing shall identify themselves and/or the group they represent, if any. They must also state their reason for addressing the board. Citizens addressing the board shall be limited to five minutes in making their remarks unless the time is increased or decreased by consent of the board. A brief supporting the remarks may be made by the citizen and submitted to the board for consideration. Those comments this evening must be on the topics on the agenda. Jordan, is this our speaker this evening?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Welcome.
Are you, Miss Walton?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, I would remind the Chair there have been court cases that have decided that you cannot limit the topic that we can speak to. But you never have tried to limit mine anyway, so that's fine, thank you. I continue to speak at meetings of this board because I can't, I don't want our community to accept or expect that bad leadership is to be expected from you. The inability of the Chair of this board to adequately lead is a concern to me. I share that concern with the board and with the rest of the community. This evening, the purpose of the meeting is to retain legal services to support the board's work and to protect the public. A legal firm that matches both the interests of the board and the interests of the community would be the one I would retain. In this regard, I have reviewed the publicly available qualifications of each firm being considered tonight. I have chosen the firm I would vote to hire if I had a vote. It seems as a member of the voting public, the public that elected you, I am entitled to be heard. The following is a quick review of my notes and my recommendation. Number one, the firm of Garin, Lukow, and Miller. I noted that there is no area of practice that is particularly relevant to the education and government that this board deals with. Their primary practice is tort-related. I didn't find any qualifications for the firm, and I am curious as to why they were included. Number two, Dickinson, Wright. Extensive education and government experience and areas of practice, they seem to be qualified. Butzel, education industry area of practice. I would like to see more government and public accommodation emphasis, for instance, open meetings and freedom of information. Plunkett, Cooney. Extensive experience and focus on education, government, and community vis-à-vis institutional needs. I like that they are a local firm with close relationship to the community. Number five, Cummings, McClory, David, and Nacho. I'm not convinced they are community-minded, however, they have experience and a wide area of focus on education systems and governance. The public is protected through the laws, rules, bylaws, and regulations that hold this board accountable. A legal firm that has experience with the operations of institutions of education and their place in the community would get my vote. The procedures and requirements of accreditation and the state and federal laws that govern the acts and the policy setting of this board must be top on the list. This law firm must not represent any of the members of this board who may be in conflict with others on the board, the administration, the student body, or the public. Your own bylaws confirm that rule. My recommendation of all the firms would be Plunkett, Cooney. Further, I come before you at each meeting to remind you your own bylaws and procedures protect the public from arbitrary decisions and policy setting. So I also have a question which I expect will be answered in due time in writing as is stated in your policy. I remember at the organizational meeting of this board, Andy Everman stated the following regarding the evaluation of the job performance of Dr. Beverly. Quote, "At this point, there's been no evaluation, and that's something that's supposed to be done annually, so we will be doing that. Has this evaluation been done, and if so, has it been made public? As a member of this community who cares very much about the importance of Mott College to Michigan, I will continue to come to meetings of this board, and I will continue to remind you of your obligations and your promises. We cannot allow ourselves to accept what you have been doing as the only level which you are capable of achieving. I expect better management with no more arbitrary decisions. I expect written answers to my questions as stated in your board policies, and I expect a good decision when you vote to retain legal counsel for your work. And I hope you heard me. Thank you."
Thank you very much. Mr. Secretary, are there any other?
That concludes comments from the public.
Concludes.
There is?
No.
There is not? Thank you. Item number one point six six. Under new business, Security Operations Center. Are there any questions? If not, I would ask for a motion for item one point six six. I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Typically, shouldn't you ask for motion? Then we discuss, then we actually make the final vote. Well, turning off your microphone doesn't help me hear any better.
I'm deaf. I don't have an earpiece this evening. We're having some technological difficulties. So, I want to hear what you have to say. And just so everybody knows, I will be relying on Larry at times to ask him for clarification. So, could you please repeat what you said?
Typically, there's a motion, and then we have discussion, and then we vote. I'm just asking if...
I'm going by, as you know, they give us a script, and so I was going by what my script said for this. So, I would entertain a motion for item one point six six.
So moved?
Second.
And we have a motion, and we have a second. Are there any discussion on item one point six six or any clarification that is needed? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. At this time, Larry Gothrop will give an overview of the process for hiring the board attorney.
Thank you, Chair. Hello?
Uh, yeah. Here.
Hello, okay.
Hello, okay. Thank you, Chair. I am here to facilitate the MCC Board Attorney selection. An RFP for attorney services was sent out with six firms responding. All six firms were invited for an in-person board interview through an email from Kimberly Delish, our interim purchasing manager. Five of the six firms responded and were scheduled for the interviews in order of the responses, and that's the order that'll be present this evening. The board determined 14 questions for these interviews which have been shared with the firms. These questions will be graded by each board member individually and compiled by Kimberly Delish, which will then be shared in total by each firm after the conclusion of the last interview. Each question has two scoring opportunities. The first is whether the question was answered thoroughly and completely, and the second for the quality of that answer. The scoring is on a scale of one to five for both, one being the lowest and five being the highest. The firms were each asked to provide a three-to-five-minute introduction and were informed that there would be 20 minutes allowed for answering of the questions with a maximum of 30 minutes for each interview. Jordan Kaiser, our Assistant Board Secretary, will pass out a scoring sheet to each board member prior to each interview. On that form that Jordan passes out, the scoring sheet, each board member will need to write on each sheet their name and the name of the firm they are interviewing where indicated. I believe it's at the bottom. Jordan will also keep time and give a five-minute warning if necessary if it's budding up to the 30 minutes.
Thank you, Larry. Mr. Jordan? Yes? We're going to determine that in just a minute. There should be the 14 questions, I believe, and then we can divide those up. And because Dr. Daley's not here this evening, I'll pick up his extras. And if anything else needs to be handled, I'll help out with that. Thank you. Now that we all have our interview questions in front of us. Sue, would you like to take question one and two? Okay. And going down the line, Michael, would you take three and four? Okay, so Sue will take one and two, you three and four, five and six. Wendy, you're seven and eight. And Jeff, you're nine and 10. And then I'll take 11, 12, 13, and 14. Are there any questions about the sheet that was been handed out and how the evaluation will be done? Your high rating is five, your low rating is one. There's a part A and a part B. Part A is, did they answer the question thoroughly and completely? And part B is, rate the quality of the answer. Was the answer right in your mind? Are there any questions before we go further? Seeing none. Mr. Jordan, would you introduce our first law firm?
Mr. Chair, the first firm that'll be coming for interviewing is Garin, Lukow, Miller, P.C.
Thank you, Larry.
They'll be here shortly.
Courtney Kraus, there we go. And we're from Garin, Lukow, Miller. And it's an honor and a pleasure to be here this evening to talk to all of you. It's my understanding that we're to give a three-to-five-minute opening, and then we're to respond to the questions. Is that accurate? Okay, all right. So let me begin by telling just a little bit about myself and my law firm. It was almost exactly 39 years ago I was asked by, I was hired by this law firm of Garin, Lukow, Miller and asked to come to Genesee County to do legal work. At the time, I did not have a lot of experience in Genesee County or in Flint in particular. And but after coming here and starting to learn the legal system, the courts, but most importantly, the people of Genesee County, I really developed an attraction to this community. I developed an affinity for this community. And I saw that despite some of the hardships that the community was undergoing, that there was a lot of people like you who are on this board who cared so deeply about the community and wanted it to succeed. And I saw in many ways that it did succeed. In those 39 years, I had the pleasure of, excuse me, I had the pleasure of learning, meeting doctors, lawyers, judges, small business owners, government officials. And not only meeting them, but getting the opportunity to represent them and to address their legal needs. It started out slow. I started doing personal injury cases and no-fault insurance claims. I developed into doing automobile negligence cases. I started following, doing employment discharge claims, contract disputes, some real estate disputes. But eventually, my practice led me to getting involved with doing government work and representing municipalities, and a lot of that in a lot of different ways. In some ways, it was representing them when they got sued. In other ways, it was helping them to address some of their issues. And not only in my professional career, but also in my personal, in the time that I would give to charities. I started volunteering. I volunteered as a board of trustee where my children went to school at Notre Dame Prep. And through that, we handled a lot of legal issues at the board of trustees for them. I volunteered at the Eastern Michigan University, their board of foundation, and ended up handling a lot of legal issues that would come across to the board of trustees. And it just, the thing that really inspired me through all that was the variety of legal work, the variety of the legal issues, and the fact that in educational institutions, there was always the goal of enriching people's lives and in making people better than they were before they came to the educational institution. And I just really thought, what better, what better way of associating in my both professional and volunteer time than to try to do it with educational institutions? The firm of Garin, Lukow, Miller has had a vast history. It was started in 1948 by three guys after World War II. They went to law school together, and they started this firm. And they have handled a variety of litigation and legal issues over the years, probably with the exception of domestic relations and criminal. We just did not ever do any of that kind of work. But it has included a great part of municipal work. Courtney does a lot of municipal work. John Galouli, who was part of the proposal, and Ebony Duff, who's also part of the proposal. In fact, they were, they were going to be here tonight, but they were called away to some municipal obligations they had. Ebony and Oak Park and John to the city of Adrian. So it has expanded, and we developed a publication called Gov Law, which we use to educate our clients on various issues related to government, issues whatever they may be, whether it be, you know, Open Meetings Act violation, Freedom of Information Act claims, whatever they are. When issues arise, we try to educate our clients. And so, in a nutshell, that's a little bit about me and about the law firm. And so unless you have some specific questions about that, I'd be glad to try to address some of the questions. And I don't know if you want to formally ask a question or if you, whether you want to, how you want to approach that. So I'll leave that up to you. Yes, we have some questions for you, and each trustee will ask a couple of questions. Sue Couch will begin with the first question.
Tell us what you know about Mott College, and why does that mission resonate with you?
Well, as I indicated, 39 years ago when I started up here, I started becoming familiar with Mott Community College. It was funny because in the early days of my legal career, it seemed like everybody still called it Flint Junior College. Probably difficult for some people, older people, to register that name in their mind. But, you know, the thing that I would see is as I would meet people and have litigated cases or non-litigated cases, and you get to know them, you would see circumstances of people who did not have the benefit of having an experience with Mott Community College, and you saw people who did have the benefit, who had an experience with Mott Community College. And it was very apparent to me that those that had the benefit of having some experience with Mott Community College were clearly better off in the community. And I'll just give you some examples. So on a typical Monday in Genesee County, you would go and you would sit in court, and you would have your matters addressed by the judge. And while you're there, you wade through other matters. Some of the times, you're there and you're listening to criminal sentencing, and you're seeing some people who made some bad decisions in their life, and as a result, had to come into contact with the law. And it seemed in almost all those circumstances that the individuals who were part of the legal system, who had made some wrongs, did not take advantage of the educational opportunities that they had available to them. And on the other end, I would be in depositions or I might be in meetings, and I would meet people who had some success in Genesee County, who came, who came there and they had made something for their lives. And it seemed, in those cases, a lot of these people, Mott Community College was a part of their life. Maybe when they got out of high school, they weren't ready for college yet. So they came to Mott Community College, and they got their college prep classes done, and then they went on to U of M Flint or some other educational institution. Maybe they came to Mott Community College for a specific trade or practice, and they used that to then build a life or a small business that they would then have some success in their lives. And those are the things that I saw with Mott Community College. And I know, again, when I started in this community back in the early 80s, you know, there was that significant transition going with GM basically de-investing in this community. And so the pressure was on, and the pressure was on here at Mott Community College for people to find a new and different way of life. And Mott Community played an integral role in that transition for a lot of people, giving them some alternative other than, you know, showing up in court, being sentenced to a crime when general orders wasn't available there for them. And so that's the way I've seen Mott Community College operate in this community, and that's the way I think it resonates with the, with the community. The second question is also by Mrs. Couch.
Explain how your role in representing Mott Community College. Would you be the principal attorney working with Mott College? And if so, how should we expect that relationship to maintain?
Yes, I would be the principal lawyer, your contact person. I would be primarily the one to attend your meetings in the event that, under your bylaws, if you requested the attorney to be here during your meetings. I would not address all the legal issues. The one thing I've learned in my 39 years of practice is that I do not know the answers to everything. And I have found that over the years, the law gets more complicated. There are a lot of regulations that occur. And quite frankly, it's, if anybody that says they know everything and can do everything, I don't know that they're can, they're really being honest with you. One of the beauties of associating with the firm that I have is I have wonderful people to surround me and to support me. From my earliest days with Garin, Lukow, Miller, there wasn't a time where I didn't ask for help on something or another, and I found the assistance. We have just some wonderful lawyers that I've associated with that firm over the years. And again, to the extent I don't know what somebody will. But there would become times, I'm sure, where I might have a conflict on a time when there's a meeting, and it might be Ebony Duff, it might be John Galouli, it might be Courtney that comes to your meeting and answers your questions. But primarily, the request for information would come to me. And if I don't know the answer, then I would send that request to others in the firm, try to get the answer and give the answers to your questions and assist you in any way that I can. Okay? Before we go further, our chief financial officer had pointed out to me, we're kind of under a timeframe, and we want to make sure everybody has the same amount of time. Sure. So without objection from the board, we should limit them to maybe a minute and a half for each answer? Does that sound good with the board? Okay. I'm sorry. That's okay. Thank you for your answer so far. I guess I'm kind of the guinea pig here tonight. By the time you get your sixth one down, you'll have it down, I'm sure. Mr. Freeman?
Please explain the role of the board attorney as you currently understand it.
Well, the role of the board attorney is set forth in your, in your, in your bylaws. And the role of the board attorney is set forth specifically with respect to the obligations it has. It is retained by the board of trustees, and it answers to the, to the college president and to the board of trustees. According to your bylaws, I am, if I am the one chosen, I would deal with your chairperson, and I would deal with the president of the college. I would deal with other legal issues as they're brought to our attention. I would assist with matters concerning ballot initiatives or other elections. And I believe your bylaws have about six or seven different items that list specifically what the board attorney has to do as well as other matters that you would wish to bring to the board attorney.
Sorry. Tell us what you know about the Open Meetings Act. Give us an example, a recent example of how you or your firm addressed a question or were involved with a complaint or issue.
The Open Meetings Act requires public bodies to hold discussions and make decisions in a public forum. The most common issue that we deal with in advising municipal entities and governmental clients is members of a board that reach out to one another in advance of a meeting and attempt to work through or talk through the agenda items. And we encounter that frequently. We also see people instant messaging or exchanging emails on their phones in advance of a meeting, and that also can be quite problematic, especially when you're getting a FOIA request.
Thank you.
I, I think there was a second part of the question. If you could actually give us examples of where you've dealt with it.
Again, in the context of meetings for municipal clients and also advising governmental agencies, when members of a board are discussing an agenda that's released in advance of the meeting, and there is a tendency to want to reach out to fellow board members before the meeting and discuss agenda items. And that is something that frequently comes up. I deal with it once or twice a month, actually. I deal with it once or twice a month, actually. And we go back and forth and make sure that those board members understand that not only are those communications subject to FOIA if someone should request them, but also that any discussions, substantive discussions, with a few exceptions under the Open Meetings Act, one being attorney-client privilege, that those discussions need to take place in an open meeting for members of the public.
You know, I'd simply add that I, I think, you know, in my experience, what I've seen is a lot of confusion over when you go into a closed session and when you don't. Even the simple process of how do you vote on it? So I've had occasions where somebody just wanted to say, "All in favor, raise their hand," and "All opposed, say no" of going into closed session. Well, you can't even do that. You have to do a roll call vote on going into a closed session meeting. Those are the types of examples of what we see. And again, sometimes it's not the, the overall concept, it's just the particularities, the fine details of making sure you hit, you meet the statutory requirements exactly, so you just don't have any problems down the road.
Mr. Reyes.
What qualities do you think make an effective board attorney?
I think the, the first quality is to understand exactly what the legal issue is that you desire to have resolved or looked into. I, I've seen examples, and, you know, on a rare occasion, maybe I haven't understood my client's request well, but you have to understand what exactly it is your client is asking you to do. And then once you understand what the client is asking you to do, do that and do only that. I've also seen examples where board lawyers have decided to take on the role of policymakers and tried to affect policy in the governmental agencies that they're working on. And that can be problematic. So I think the role of the board lawyer is, one, understand what the client's wishes and desires are. Two, you're, you're, you're not in a policymaking role, you're not in a political role, you're in a legal role. Your role is to provide legal advice and counsel to the client. And with, if the board attorney can limit their role to that, then usually the relationship works very well.
Thank you. How do you handle conflict?
Well, I, I'm interpreting the word conflict to mean a legal conflict of interest here. And if I'm mistaken in that, please let me know. But legal conflicts of interest are defined in our professional rules of conduct. And generally, when we think that there is a conflict of interest, or somebody else raises a conflict of interest, one of the things you have to do first is advise. You have to be open about it. So, if for example, you were to bring a matter to us, let's say you felt that it was necessary to start some litigation against somebody on behalf of the college, and you came to me and you said, "Brickley, we got to sue these people, they're not paying their bills." And I go through a conflict check and I find out, well, guess what? One of my other partners is representing that same entity. What I would have to do is I would have to advise you, and we would have to advise them of this conflict of interest. There is processes under the Michigan Rules of Professional Conduct that allow you to waive the conflict under certain circumstances, but that is the client's choice, it is not the lawyer's choice. So, when we appreciate a conflict or a conflict is brought to our attention, the first and most important thing is to be open about it, to advise about it, and then follow the rules of professional conduct, which require us not only disclose it, but then to follow both the client's wishes with respect to how to handle it.
Mindy?
Can you hear me? Good evening. Number seven, what experience do you have in handling Title IX complaints?
I have experience personally in defending educational institutions, and I perhaps bring a unique perspective, because before joining the legal profession, I was a K-12 educator. In addition to defending the litigation, I have provided seminars to members of the Michigan Education Association for Higher Education on how to handle Title IX processes and procedures for handling complaints, and what those practices look like on the ground level when implementing them on college campuses.
Thank you. Next question. Please explain the core, nope, one above. Tell us how your firm has supported diversity.
Our firm has a diversity and inclusion committee. We actively recruit a diverse population of employees in Detroit, as well as in all of our satellite offices. And we also sponsor a scholarship competition amongst the law schools in Detroit that features a diversity and inclusion topic, that students can write essays, and there is a competition, and they are awarded a scholarship as, for the winning essay.
Please explain the core values of your firm.
The core values of our firm is to provide the highest quality legal services we can to our clients. We believe as a firm that the best clients we have are the ones that are the best educated in what the law is. We have always taken an active role in educating our clients on the areas of law that they are of interest on. As I indicated earlier, one of our publications is called Gov Law. We have other publications on other areas of law that we submit to our clients. And it could be, there's a new decision out of the Court of Appeals or the Supreme Court on this issue. We would, and we don't charge our clients for these things. These, these are things we do. We believe, so we, we would send out an email, a fax, a letter, a brochure, and it would explain this legal thing, and it would also explain how it would affect the client that's receiving this, this publication. And again, the reason we do this is because we think that the role of a lawyer is to try to make sure that the legal issues are not driving what is occurring in a client's business, education, whatever it is they are doing. That the law should be there to support what they do, not to interfere with what they do. And so by keeping you educated, keeping you advised of what's going on, it allows you to better avoid some legal pitfalls, to navigate these things, and to make the decisions legally correct from the beginning, as opposed to after the fact, having to address a possible litigation or disputes over what you did.
Do you have any experience in handling internal investigations? And if so, explain the function of the Upjohn Warning.
So, again, the, the, and again, this is the lawyer in me speaking. The term internal investigation can be considered rather broadly. So, yes, we've, we've handled, I've handled some internal investigations, our firm has handled internal investigations. The, the nature, I think, of what you're referring to is, let's say, there's an allegation made on campus, and you, nothing has happened yet, but you leave, you need, you need to get to the bottom of the, of the story. You want to know what's happening. And so in that circumstance, yes, we would get, if you wanted us to, we would get involved in the investigation. Our role would be to, to again, follow the parameters of the investigation that you have set. So, find out, maybe you want us to interview people. We go out, we talk to people. This is where the Upjohn Warning issue comes into play. The Upjohn Warning is basically what we refer to as corporate Miranda. So you go to people and you say to them, "Listen, I am a lawyer for Mont Community College. I am here investigating this issue. You should know that I am not your personal lawyer. So what you tell me is not necessarily privileged information. So you have to understand that what you're telling me could be made public." So that's the essence of the Upjohn Warning, is this corporate Miranda, that basically kind of, we've heard, I don't know how many, all the crime thrillers we've seen in our life, you know, what you say can and will be used against you. So that's kind of what it comes down to. There's a specific language that we could give to you if you were doing your own internal investigation, or we could use to meet that Upjohn Warning, but that's the, the essence of it.
Thank you.
Tell us your understanding of the CLERI Act.
The CLERI Act was federal legislation which related to the reporting of certain crimes, so that it would give potential students and existing students knowledge and information. The purpose is to provide individuals with this information so that they can make adequate choices with respect to where they want to be, when they want to be, where they want to be, type of a thing. So, it is something that is highly regulatory in the sense that there are, again, some very specific steps that need to be taken place with respect to the types of crimes that have to be reported, when they have to be reported. I don't know if you have a compliance officer here on the college that handles those types of things. If you don't, that would be a suggestion to train somebody in that regard, and we could assist them in training them in that regard. But obviously, and if you do have somebody, we'd be glad to sit down with them and go over with them what they're doing and just making, I'm sure they're probably doing it right, but just, you know, you want to make sure everything is done, because sometimes as administrations come along, they change the rules and regulations on what they expect or how they define certain terms. So, I don't want to say that my experience with the CLERI Act is extensive or vast, because it is not. But I do have some experience with it and some knowledge of it.
What are the most recent developments surrounding the issue of free speech on campus?
The biggest issue with free speech on campus concerns the conflict between desiring to encourage open discourse and free speech, while also being sensitive that there is a feeling that certain topics should be off limits.
And in that discussion, there is also, I believe, a misunderstanding of the First Amendment, because one of the things of the First Amendment that has not changed in this political climate is that incitement of violence or hatred has never been protected by the First Amendment. So that's, I think, the biggest issue surrounding college campuses right now.
The other issue that sometimes arises is, and I don't know what the, the Mont Community College has in this regard, but when a college decides to invite speakers on the campus, sometimes if these speakers have some political agenda, this can create issues regarding the First Amendment and involve situations with, with respect to protesters, supporters, do you have to then call in somebody else? That's another issue. There was a, a terrible example occurred out at Stanford Law School where a federal judge was asked to come in and speak, and he was basically drowned out by the students, and there was a lot of kickback from that. And that's a prime example of some of the issues that can occur on a college campus, in addition to when the, when the students are speaking out, when the college starts getting involved in, in having speakers come in as well.
We have less than five minutes left. There are two questions that I have left. Have you ever advised an educational institution to perform a review of their ethics? Did you do the review? What are the three key components of an ethical, ethics policy?
So, in my volunteer work with Notre Dame Prep High School and Eastern Michigan Board Foundation, I, I acted as legal counsel to both, and we did undertake ethics reviews in both of those boards. It was a common practice. We would try to do it once every three or four years. In addition to reviewing our board policies and procedures, we would undertake our, an ethics review. Some of the elements that we would include would be transparency, disclosure, family relationships, financial conflicts of interest. It, it is bound that some of these quote-unquote ethical issues will arise. And it's not so much whether they arise, it's about whether they're disclosed or not. Sometimes it's not, the problems don't come from the fact that there's a conflict, the problem comes about because nobody said anything about it. And so, one of the things that we did in both those organizations is we had, every year, we would fill out a form that we would all sign, detailing any potential conflicts, submitting them to the, to the university, to the school, and let them know what exactly was going on.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for us?
I do.
No?
I don't have fourteen questions for you, though. I just, I just, I know you guys have been without a lawyer for six months or so. I'm just curious if you are willing to tell me the kind of legal issues that you've been putting on the back burner that may need to be addressed sooner than later, and once the time comes where you have to hire a lawyer.
So, let's, you know, the rest of this, we'll go through the other five firms this evening. After that, we'll calculate the scores. The board will look at the scores and determine which firm that we would like, and motions will be made and discussed. We may not be able to let you know until tomorrow, so if you're not staying the rest of the evening, I appreciate it for you coming in and answering. Mr. Freeman.
I, I believe part of the question was about what, what issues we've had on the back burner or not been addressing, and during your presentation, I haven't heard about your experience with the Higher Learning Commission. So they are the ones that give us our accreditation. You know, there's examples of, I believe it was in North Idaho, that, you know, they made some very poor decisions, their legal did not intervene, and they lost their accreditation as a result. So we are fully accountable to Higher Learning Commission. So, you know, my question back would be, what experience do you have with Higher Learning Commission?
I personally don't have any. And I can ask within the firm to see if other people do, and I'm being as honest with you as I can on that. That doesn't mean I can't learn about it and I can't get involved in it, but I think you're correct, that when you get into issues of accreditation, you should send these matters to the, whoever your legal counsel is, and have them walk you through it to make sure that you are not missing, you're, you're making sure you're dotting all your i's and crossing all your t's on those types of things, because again, you do not want to miss out on your accreditation. I understand the significance of that.
Is there anything else? Thank you very much for coming in.
Well, thank you all, and again, it would be an honor to, to get this role. I know you have some other wonderful law firms and attorneys to choose from, and so I'm sure whatever choice you make will be a good one for the Mont Community College community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Are we ready for the next one?
What's it?
Are we ready for the next one?
Yes, go ahead and get them. Are you ready?
public and private, but primarily public. I have numerous clients in the community college sector, I have hundreds of clients in the K-12 sector, and I have dozens of clients in the higher education, university, college sector. Community colleges are a rather unique institution as we look at them, both state by state and within Michigan. There are not tons of them, and there are some that are very, very large and some that are very, very small, but they share a universe of authorizing legislation and problems that they may encounter. So in terms of Dickinson Wright, we have offices now in 10 different states, we have 780 lawyers. Our origins are here in Michigan, they remain here in Michigan, our primary office, offices in Detroit, Troy, and Ann Arbor, service the entire state. We have a large office also in Grand Rapids. My role with the firm is I am the head of its educational practice, and I travel all around the state. I limit my practice to Michigan. I'm not a practitioner of education law in other states, although I manage the practices of those states in any way I can to help them, but I am the head of the education law practice for Dickinson Wright here in Michigan. Personally, my background is that I grew up in West and East Africa most of my life. I came back to the United States for my last two years of high school and then college and have remained ever since. I went to law school in New England where I met my bride-to-be, and we both came back to Michigan after graduating, and I've been practicing here ever since. I have five children, all of whom are products of public education, including sojourns within community colleges here and there, and they've been exceptionally well-served by our public education system, and I'm dedicated to a public education system. I believe in it, I think it's the bedrock of what makes our country different from every other country in the world, and that's my passion, is representing public education in all of its forms.
Sue, couch.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Can you tell us what you know about Mott Community College, and why does our mission resonate with you?
Well, I'll start with the mission. Actually, I'll start with what the college actually does and what I find to be impressive about the college. The commitment to the area within which it serves is second to any other institution in the area. The college's focus on creating programming that best serves its community, as opposed to high-profile programming that may not meet a wit to your community, is also an indication that the college is very well-connected with the demographics within which it operates. It's not looking to aggrandize its role statewide and go beyond what its primary mission is. And in that regard, it's had to be very, very adept at changing over time in light of the communities that it's serving and the various economic times those communities have suffered, gone through, rebounded from, and may be hit with again. So crisis is not something that the college is unable to adapt to, recognize, and restructure itself going forward. I've had interaction with Mott Community College on many levels. My wife is from Fenton, my father-in-law actually taught here, my father-in-law was school board president in Fenton for quite a long time as well. I was married right downtown Flint, had my bachelor party at Water Street Pavilion, and our reception was at the Hyatt when it was the Hyatt. So I'm well-familiar with the area, I'm well-familiar with the community college, and unbeknownst to some of you, there was a great consternation when the Michigan Civil Rights Initiative was passed here in Michigan, and many people understood it for what it was, and many people misunderstood it for what it wasn't. And I aided and abetted this college through another relationship I have with another college, find ways to perpetuate programs that they thought had been placed in jeopardy by the Michigan Civil Rights Initiative, and I was able to help this college ensure those programs could go forward without violating the Michigan Civil Rights Initiative. So that's when I kind of got a sense, or the biggest sense, of where the commitment of this college is with respect to its own community and with respect to diversity, being a reflection of the community that it serves, and making sure its programming is going to be effective for its residents and attendees as opposed to somebody, say, in northern Michigan or further out west.
Thank you.
Second question.
Does that answer the questions sufficiently?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Sue, second question.
Explain how you feel, how you see your role in representing Mott Community College. Would you be the principal attorney working with Mott Community College, and if so, how should we expect that relationship be maintained?
So I'm going to, if it's okay with you, I'm going to link this question together with question three and question five, because I think they're just so integrated together that it's difficult to treat them separately, but I'll try to deal with them in a linear fashion. First of all, I would be the lead attorney handling Mott Community College's needs. My approach to that role is that I'm always accessible, I'm always available, and that's, and I literally mean 24/7. Everyone gets my personal cellphone, everyone gets my personal home phone. Most of the issues that are of great importance tend to develop at times when it's not the regular working day. It can be either coming out of the product of a board meeting, or the board president's been asked by other board members or the chair to contact the attorney. It could be something that an administrator couldn't get around to until the end of the day because the phone's been ringing and you've got to take care of day-to-day business. So you need to be ready and available during the hours that people really have time to address an issue that maybe they didn't have time to address during the working day. That's my role, that's the role I play with all of our major educational institution clients. In that regard, most of my time is not billed to the client because I'm either confirming something and being a sounding board for somebody that's contacting me, who I restructure contact with counsel, and I'll get into that in a minute, or I'm developing a plan for how to handle a particular situation, and I'm assembling the right people and right pieces to put in place. For that kind of a role, I don't charge my clients. You need to have seamless access to a major person that can speak and sign for the firm, somebody like myself, who isn't going to charge every time you contact them, and that person needs to coordinate and understand where you're coming from or what needs to be done. That's the role I play. If the matter arises beyond just that phone call, that something does need to be done, certain people do need to be gotten involved, or a meeting needs to be had, then of course, that's when the billable time comes into place. But my most valued role and the role I prefer, and really the part of my job that I prefer the most, is having that 24 availability, 24/7 availability, 365 days a year. And in playing that role, you shouldn't be worried about calling that person and getting a bill in the mail for the privilege of having done so. 90% of my most effective counsel begins and ends sometimes with that phone call. Absolutely, what you're doing is completely correct, don't worry about it. I would suggest that you do A, B, or C. If you're having a problem with your agenda, the Open Meetings Act, what did you post, et cetera, and it can be sorted out in that phone call, it's not going to result in a billable event. That's the kind of relationship we want to have with our clients, and we want them to have the confidence that they have that kind of relationship with us. As I said, if it develops into something more discreet, something that needs a little more attention or handling, or can't be resolved just through a couple of phone calls, then of course, it's going to be a billable event. But the object for our firm is to minimize those and also to devote a level of training to our clients, as you can see from our proposal, that can be upwards of three trainings a year on any topics you choose or that we suggest. Also, we do not charge for that, to elevate the ability of clients to comply contemporaneously with all the laws that affect them to the best of their ability and minimize the need for outside counsel. So that's my approach. This segues into one of the other questions, is what do you see the role of a board attorney? Well, it's pretty simple. When this board hires a counsel, that counsel is the board's attorney. It's not the administration's attorney, although 90% of what we may do may result from interfacing with your administration. Our complete 100% absolute loyalty is to the board, and if something's not board-approved, we're not authorized to deal with it. If something's happening we know isn't board-approved, we have an obligation to tell the board what we're aware of. We represent the board. Now, a lot of that representation has already been delegated to others who may have permission to interface with us because we're aware of what your bylaws say and what your policies say. But there's a whole lot of area that isn't delegated by the board and requires board approval, or at least some sort of tacit approval from within the boundaries of the authority of the board chair or the board president, and we operate strictly in accordance with that. We are the board's attorney. And as I said, while we may 90% of the time be dealing with administrators on a particular issue, it might be an HR issue, it could be a buildings and ground issue, it could be, you know, a procurement issue, we are always going to ensure that whatever we're doing is backed by demonstrable board authority that gave the authority to the people we're dealing with to have us do what we're doing. Now, that doesn't always involve coming back to the board, it may be checking policies, bylaws, but we're very sensitive to that. One of the biggest mistakes younger attorneys in particular often make when dealing with an institutional client is they don't understand who they're working for, or worse, develop relationships that can come into conflict with the actual person or entity they're working for. And if you're not aware of those parameters, you're not going to be successful over a long period of time. The board governs this college, the board governs what legal counsel can and can't do, and quite frankly, through its various arrangements and its periodic pronouncements through resolution, it governs what everyone else does at the college. It may have agreed to things contractually, it may have developed powers it's delegated in its policies, but if your own attorney isn't aware of those things, they're not going to have a prayer of really understanding who their actual client is, which is the board. And that's the way it should be, that's the way the law means it to be, and while I've seen some kooky things where institutions have a lawyer for its administration, a lawyer for its board, that, to me, indicates a level of dysfunction, that somebody's forgotten who the boss is in the mix. So in that regard, my primary role is to make sure whatever the board resolves to do can be done, and to make sure whatever it wants to do is done legally, and to also advise it about what its options are if it asks me for what they are, under the law or otherwise. And that's the role we play. That's actually the role any lawyer representing a community college should be playing, and you can get quagmired if you're not careful into misunderstanding that role, especially as things get more comfortable and time develops. We never forget that our role is to be counsel for the board. If the board trusts us enough to interact with its administration and gives us parameters, we're happy to follow them, but we want to make sure it's absolutely in line with what the board wants us to do. And then finally, I just wanted to segue to the qualities of an effective board attorney. Absent absolute emergency situations, which in the legal world, believe it or not, there are not that many, methodical and comprehensive knowledge of the area you purport to represent is so critical to a successful relationship with a client. If you've never represented a community college, you better be honest when you're at your first interview telling a potential client, "This will be my first community college I've ever represented." And there's going to be a first for everyone, but there are also people that do this day in and day out, and it's your choice, of course. It shouldn't be overly personality-driven, it should be a methodical clinical exercise of giving boards the parameters of what they can or can't do, and then deferring to their choices within those parameters and following their direction. That's what needs to happen. Using your wisdom to predict outcomes is always helpful, but it's not an absolute, and the lawyer is not supposed to be perceived by the public as at all diluting the independence of the board members that were elected to represent the college. And that kind of answers all three of those questions at once, and it asked about the Upjohn warning. The Upjohn warning is precisely what I said. As board attorney, I represent no individual, nor can I, and if I were asked to do so, I'd have to disclose that to you, that that request was even made. That's how clinical this has to be. I represent the board as a whole, I represent board members in their individual capacities, no. When they're acting in their official capacity, yes, if the board permits me to do so. So it's completely at the behest of the board, and the board is the, can hire and fire the lawyer.
Can we move on to the next question?
And that's it.
Mr. Freeman?
All right. Since you were able to efficiently, I guess, wind some of these answers in together, I did at the, in the previous interview, bring up the Higher Learning Commission, and, you know, our role is, you know, we are part of the accreditation process, and I see that you have, within your firm, a partner and an associate who deal with higher education issues. Have you ever come across issues where you've had to advise about policies or even, you know, bylaws and responses to specific things that Higher Learning Commission actually mandates?
Yes, absolutely. We've had to not only take corrective actions, but we've had to anticipate what it is to qualify going forward. We always keep our ear to the pulse of what's happening there, especially when it comes to audit time and things like that. So yes, absolutely. We, part of our annual auditing for our clients includes periodic auditing of their bylaws and policies to ensure that they're compliant. Some of our clients subscribe to services that do that for them, but even there, those services will often offer the board a choice or allow it to differentiate in the language. And unless you kind of have a good sense of what is locally needed by a client like Mott Community College, those policies usually are too generic and not thought through in terms of what you're actually trying to accomplish within your community. So, and I'll give you a good example. You can have a policy on procurement, but if it's just a broad policy with, say, a price line above which you have to come to the board for specific approval, we've always seen the wisdom in differentiating that within certain kinds of purchasing functions as opposed to others. If it's a recurrent budgetary item, maybe you can exceed that amount and That's what needs to happen. Using your wisdom to predict outcomes is always helpful, but it's not an absolute. And the lawyer is not supposed to be perceived by the public as at all diluting the independence of the board members that were elected to represent the college. And that kind of answers all three of those questions at once. And it asked about the Upjohn warning. The Upjohn warning is precisely what I said. As board attorney, I represent no individual, nor can I. And if I were asked to do so, I'd have to disclose that to you, that that request was even made. That's how clinical this has to be. I represent the board as a whole. I represent board members in their individual capacities, no. When they're acting in their official capacity, yes, if the board permits me to do so. So it's completely at the behest of the board, and the board is the... Can hire and fire the lawyer.
Can you move on to the next question?
And that's it.
Mr. Freeman?
All right. Since you were able to efficiently, I guess, wind some of these answers in together, I did at the, in the previous interview, bring up the Higher Learning Commission. And, you know, our role is, you know, we are part of the accreditation process. And I see that you have, within your firm, a partner and an associate who deal with higher education issues. Have you ever come across issues where you've had to advise about policies or even, you know, bylaws and responses to specific things that Higher Learning Commission actually mandates?
Yes, absolutely. We've had to not only take corrective actions, but we've had to anticipate what it is to qualify going forward. We always keep our ear to the pulse of what's happening there, especially when it comes to audit time and things like that. So yes, absolutely. We, part of our annual auditing for our clients includes periodic auditing of their bylaws and policies to ensure that they're compliant. Some of our clients subscribe to services that do that for them. But even there, those services will often offer the board a choice or allow it to differentiate in the language. And unless you kind of have a good sense of what is locally needed by a client like Mott Community College, those policies usually are too generic and not thought through in terms of what you're actually trying to accomplish within your community. So, and I'll give you a good example. You can have a policy on procurement, but if it's just a broad policy with, say, a price line above which you have to come to the board for specific approval. We've always seen the wisdom in differentiating that within certain kinds of purchasing functions as opposed to others. If it's a recurrent budgetary item, maybe you can exceed that amount and have a special category of purchases so you're not being belabored by routine but purchases that exceed an amount. If it's for construction, land acquisition, that requires very specific board-by-board approval, that sort of thing. So yes, we're absolutely familiar with that process. We're familiar with making sure your bylaws and policies will at least facially be compliant. Operations and procedures pursuant to those are also audited. So that's really an internal function, unless we're asked to investigate a particular activity and find out, and report back to the board whether we think it's going to run afoul of any auditing practices or any auditing spot checking that may go on.
Okay, next question. Tell us what you know about the Open Meetings Act. Give us an example of a recent example of how you or your firm addressed a question or involved with a complaint or issue.
Sure. Perhaps unbeknownst to you, I'm considered one of the state's foremost experts on the Open Meetings Act. I lecture on it to the government itself, as well as many other governmental units. I've written numerous publications on the Open Meetings Act. The thing that people get most quagmired in with respect to the Open Meetings Act, of course, is the permissible basis for a closed session under the Open Meetings Act. It's a very, very specific set of circumstances that permit a closed session. And when I say permit, it doesn't mandate them, it permits them. The only time it's mandated is when it would be a FERPA violation to do otherwise. But it's a choice. So when the Open Meetings Act allows a closed-session meeting to occur, if you understand the reasons why those are permitted, it gives less concern to individual board members who would prefer nevertheless to meet in public. And there are good, hard reasons why closed sessions are permissible. And at the end of the day, no matter what happens in a closed session, eventually, there's going to be public transparent reporting of that event in some way, shape, or form in any event. That's why those closed-session permissions are so few and yet so important to understand. Because it's a valuable process sometimes to meet in closed session and discuss those topics. But the most commonly, the most recent situation I had was a particular government authority was getting a little testy with one of our clients about the fact that they were not residing the hard copy of their meeting minutes at the location where the meetings were taking place. And when we got involved, we first of all made clear that the day and age of keeping hard copy minute books in three-ring binders, while still going on in some places, has never been mandated by the law in the first place. It's just that back, it was back in a day when the only way they could be kept was hard copy. But it never specified that was the only medium they could be kept in. So when we showed that the client was actually storing all the minutes electronically, had a portal the public could use to access those minutes and request copies of them, they realized that was actually completely compliant with the Open Meetings Act. There have been some momentous changes. And you have to remember, I've been practicing for 40 years, so they seem recent to me, but they're not that recent. But there have been quite a few changes in the Open Meetings Act, mostly prompted by COVID. But one of the ironies of COVID was while it opened up the ability to meet and still comply with local ordinances regarding COVID, when they decided that was over, they went back to a more restrictive reading of the Open Meetings Act than they had been permitting before COVID. Such as, for example, whether or not you could have a virtual meeting. Prior to COVID, you could have a virtual meeting. Post-COVID, you cannot, except under some very limited circumstances, ninety percent of which don't pertain. So I'm always aware of the Open Meetings Act. I'm always aware of boards complying with those and not getting comfortable with kind of, hey, nobody's ever said anything to us, we've always done it this way. If it's not compliant, you need to get compliant. Because it doesn't matter that somebody hasn't contested it up till now. It just takes one. And it can be very embarrassing to a board that the public thinks it wasn't following a major act that governs its activities, especially at board meetings. So we routinely inservice our clients, and all, as I said, these inservices are at no charge. And when we inservice on the OMA, we actually provide a manual to our clients that it can use for reference. Finally, emailing and what can or cannot be said. Pretty easy to explain, but hard to control. People don't, still don't quite get it, that no matter what you write, even if it's at off-times, when it's to another person who's a board member, even if they happen to be your neighbor and you're talking about going to the farmer's market on Saturday, you have to be always cognizant about the context in which you're speaking to another board member, even in private life. Because if it at all smacks of business, it's going to become a public document. And if it becomes a conversation between you, that person and another person, that person now and another person, where at the end of the day, you've got a quorum of people chatting, maybe not all together, but with each other, you've de facto violated the Open Meetings Act. So it's a very important act to be fully aware of and fully cognizant of when fulfilling the role you fulfill. And it can never hurt to be trained on it periodically.
Sir, each question a minute and a half, because we've got about out of time.
Okay.
Art?
How do you handle conflict?
It's a big category. If what you're referring to is conflict within a board, conflict between a board and its own administration, there are a myriad of ways that that can be done. Most of that, when it's the board and, say, its administration, is often resolved by making clear who's in charge and what the prerogatives are of the board. But it's such a broad topic. We do act as middle man or woman from time to time when we see conflict arising with an institution that we represent, bearing in mind that we're the board's attorney. So resolving those conflicts is not always easy, but sometimes we can see them coming, we can see them developing, and we can warn our clients about it and help best to do it. We have found that universally, no matter what the origin of a conflict, it usually bespeaks of either miscommunication, a lack of communication, or a lack of transparency. Most conflicts that plague public sector institutions stem from either a misperception of a lack of transparency, i.e. stuff's going on in secret, or a failure to communicate in a robust way with those that it's important to communicate with. But we try to handle those so that there's never a lasting or unnecessarily negative outcome. That's the best way I can describe my approach to conflict.
Sir, there's less than five minutes left. We have seven questions. So we need to get through, we're hoping to get through everything.
I understand. I appreciate it.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Number seven, what experience do you have in handling Title IX complaints?
We're handling Title IX matters every day. And with our public sector clients, we're routinely handling every aspect of Title IX at some point in time or another. Whether it's ensuring that an internal complaint is being handled correctly, whether it's making sure they're designating the right person, male or female, as their Title IX coordinator, whether their policies and websites reflect the right thing, to actually handling the investigations when there are internal conflicts, or when guidance is needed. So there's no aspect of Title IX that we don't handle. We've also handled it in the context of ensuring that physical plant and physical facilities meet the standards required. We were the first firm to build a Title IX compliance provision into a standard AIA contract that architects routinely said, oh, well, we're not responsible. We never took a look at whether, you know, this field we're building over here for girls softball is going to be functionally equivalent and compliant with respect to the installations that are already there for boys. And the client's saying, well, I just expected you to understand that that was a necessary element. And they were like, hands off, hands off, we're not doing it. So we ended up revising a standard AIA contract to include language that put the onus on the contractor to make sure they were fulfilling our obligations in creating parity. So there's no aspect of Title IX we don't handle. Whether it's in the labor and employment, student, student on faculty, within faculty, it can permeate to the highest levels of board, community, contractors. Everybody has a Title IX responsibility when interacting with your institution. And we're instrumental with our clients in ensuring that those compliances are met, whether through a contract policy, procedure, approach, outcome, reporting, and interfacing with the authorities when necessary. So we're well familiar with those requirements.
Thank you. The next question. Tell us how your firm has supported diversity.
We've always been on the cusp in Michigan of the major law firms in the marketplace of being on top of and ahead of the curve when it comes to diversity, both in terms of our own internal reflection, who works for us, as well as the relationships we have and the partnerships we have with clients and community institutions. We are absolutely committed to diversity. We also have fielded and headed many commissions involving higher education in particular in trying to fix the problem of under-representation in higher education and the problem of underservice in the K-12 level that comes home to haunt students when they get to the higher educational level. They are often bereft of certain skills and things that are necessary to enable them to compete due to no fault of their own, due to being underserved at other levels of education in their career. So we've been instrumental, especially at the juncture between K-12 and higher education, in ensuring that the institutions in Michigan have a program to make diversity students successful in those institutions and in the marketplace that they're hopefully going to graduate to when they complete the course of study. And there's been great underservice in that regard. And we've made it our mission to focus on that in particular in trying to overcome that. And we spearheaded that with Michigan State University's Law School and the dean there, and in trying to develop a statewide program that will be successful that other institutions can adopt, including community colleges, I might add. So we're well-known for that.
Time, sir, time. And now I must ask the board what the pleasure is. We have used up all the time that's allocated for this candidate's firm. Would we like to extend it out and give him a minute for each question so we get each question answered? Is the consensus to move forward in that manner? Sir, for each question now, please answer it within one minute. Thank you.
I will endeavor to do so. Thank you.
Could you please explain the core values of your firm?
The core values of our firm are to give maximum devotion to our clients, minimize cost for our clients, and achieve long-term relationships with our clients. We're not that interested in one-off relationships. We want to establish a long-term relationship of trust and success. And so we understand, especially in the public sector, that that requires an economy of scale with those clients that isn't the same for well-heeled public sector clients. You folks are working on tight, if not too small of budgets as it is in terms of the state aid you rely upon and that sort of thing. So we're very sensitive to that, but we want to have long-term relationships and we want to render value to our clients.
Next question.
Do you have any experience with internal investigations?
Absolut-
I realize you've already touched on these.
Right, but it isn't limited to Title IX. We've investigated all manner and species of things that require investigation. We are also routinely called in. All of the school lawyers in Michigan know each other. We all know each other very well. And so sometimes even there is wisdom in calling in an outside, unconnected, completely objective source for an investigation, and we will even fill that role as well. But we've conducted all manner of investigations involving white collar, labor and employment, ethics, quite a number involving ethics, origins of communications and problems, right down to plant, physical plant safety, risk analysis. There's no kind of investigation that we can't perform. Now, we will also tell you when it's not prudent for us to be doing it and when it would be better served to have somebody else do something, even if we're capable. But in terms of capability, there really isn't any kind of investigation that we're not capable of performing.
Time.
Thank you.
Tell us your understanding of the CLIRI Act.
CLIRI Act's another act that was meant to advance the cause of transparency and to give, I guess, consumers a comparative set of data to look at when looking at one institution versus another. We've all become very used to it now. I applaud, in particular, the security forces for most community colleges because they are ahead of the curve in complying with CLIRI as compared to many other law enforcement agencies where they have a different bureaucratic web they have to deal with in making that compliance and different political forces. It is incumbent on us to comply and be transparent. I'm not going to debate the wisdom of a law like that in the way it's currently structured. It is what it is. And its purpose is to serve the name of transparency when it comes to certain kinds of crimes. And we all know what those kinds of crimes are. There are about seven or eight of them, but they fall primarily into the murder category, the assault category, and for lack of a better word, the theft or...
Thank you.
Personal property category.
Thank you. What are the most recent developments surrounding the issue of free speech on campus?
It's the inability of the public in general to understand what the First Amendment really means. And people forget the First Amendment is not a right in all circumstances. It is more of a prohibition against the government being able to regulate it than it is anything else. Free speech can be squelched in the private sector. There's just, people don't understand that and often have trouble wrapping their arms around that. So the devil that comes out of that detail is that often, public institutions are tarred and feathered by the free speech they cannot deny their students to engage in. That's exactly what a robust campus is going to produce. It's going to produce free speech, sometimes controversial speech. And while you can regulate it in certain instances, time, place, manner, equal access, et cetera, at the end of the day, in the public square, you can't stop your students from speaking their minds. And people misperceive your inability to do anything about that as somehow subscribing to the views that are being espoused by that student. That's as crazy as saying you believe what every student reads in a book that they take from the library. That's just not the way it is. The library experience is quieter, and people don't check people's... At least, they didn't use to check what people used to check out of a library and read. But to claim that the board must subscribe to the views in a book that it provides a student in a library is just crazy.
Thank you.
But that's what's been happening.
The next question is, have you ever advised an educational institution to perform a review of their ethics? Did you do the review? And what are the three components of an ethical policies, ethics policy?
Yes, yes, and they are. One, to ensure your policies comply with what legally required. Most people are not well-versed in what the ethics laws are on the books already in Michigan as a matter of statutory compliance. There are very clear-cut ethical rules that govern what you can and can't do as, say, a board member on this board. Secondly, there's, whenever elected offices are involved, there's a whole nother body of laws that govern what can or can't be done by that institution, whether it's the Michigan Campaign Finance Acts, the Incompatible Public Offices Act. They all, it's a universe of laws that you have to, in the first instance, make sure policies and bylaws comply with. Then, you have to understand what past audits have revealed in terms of internal controls and address those through ethical policies as well. And then you also have to decide, how do you want to operate as a board? Do you want to have board ethical policies that your members subscribe to, bearing in mind that often the only consequence that can befall somebody that chooses not to follow those is being censored, obviously not necessarily removed from the board? But yes, yes, and we're aware of what they need to contain.
The last question, do you have any questions for us?
I do have one, and that is... And maybe it's something you don't want to necessarily reel, but... The mission of the college, as I previously stated it as somebody that's observed it, would you say that my observations were correct and in line with what the board perceives one of its missions to be, which is to... which is to serve, intimately serve, the needs of its own community as well as addressing the diverse needs of that community in terms of underprivileged members of the community, underserved members of the community? Was that a fair characterization of where the board is going? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
Does the board wish to take a five-minute break to use the bathroom or other five-minute break?
Check, 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 one, two. Check, check, check. Check. Test one, two. Check. Test one, two. Check. Test one, two. Test one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Test. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Test. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Test. One, two, three, and four, five, six.
Good evening, and welcome. You'll have five minutes to give us a presentation of your firm. And then we will have 14 questions total, minute and a half for each answer. The first two questions, you can take a little extra time, but not much so we can get through all the questions. And then after it's all done, we will be grading you. Then we will also compile them at the end and select a firm. We might not be getting back with you this evening, but you will know by tomorrow. So thank you very much, and please let us know about your firm.
For the record, do you want, on the record...
Oh, one more thing. Make sure you use the microphone because our interpreters, our technical equipment's not working well. So, thank you.
They weren't interviewed. They were not interviewed. They were not interviewed.
Okay. Jordan, would you please introduce them?
Check, check. There we go. Next up, we have Tom Cable, Sarah Nuremberg, and Daniel Tuckell from Butzel.
Good evening. I'm Dan Tuckell, and I'm the chair of Butzel Long's Labor, Employment, and Employee Benefits Department. As you know, I'm here today with my partners, Tom Cable and Sarah Nuremberg. Let me tell you a little bit about us, and then I'm going to talk a little bit about the firm. My own personal practice is primarily devoted to representing institutions of higher education in civil rights matters, matters involving due process and freedom of speech, denial of tenure, tenure revocation, Open Meetings Act, Freedom of Information Act, arbitrations and contract interpretation, and the creation and updating of various policies. With regard to Tom, before he was elected to our firm's Board of Directors, where he currently serves, he was chair of the Corporate Law Department. He's got extensive experience in numerous aspects of corporate practice and real estate and finance. He's represented community colleges in a variety of real estate matters, lease, sale, transactions, review of commercial contracts, and other financing matters. Before joining us, Sarah worked as an assistant Oakland County prosecuting attorney. She's got significant experience representing institutions of higher education in arbitrations, as well as various investigations, including investigations involving allegations of sexual misconduct. She was recently involved in working with one of our higher education clients in a strike situation involving their graduate student organization. With regard to the firm, community colleges, as you know, are unique entities. They're creatures of statute, which gives them various statutory obligations. And as public entities, they also need to comply with various constitutional requirements, such as free speech and due process. Community colleges have all of the same range of legal issues as the largest four-year institutions. They also have all the legal issues that would be present for a large employer and a large landlord, more than most. We have an industry group that is specifically dedicated to higher education clients and their issues. We've represented higher education institutions in virtually every area of law, including employment, student discipline, student dismissal, collective bargaining, arbitration and litigation, real estate acquisition, sale and leasing, financing, presidential contracts, denial of tenure and tenure revocation, environmental issues, review of commercial contracts, review, editing, and creation of employment and other policies, and construction, to name just a few. We believe that we have the depth and experience to represent the college in all of its legal needs and to do so in a cost-effective, efficient, and successful way. And we're happy to turn out to the questions you have for us.
Sue? Couple of questions for now.
Good evening. Tell us what you know about Mott Community College, and why does our mission resonate with you?
All right. Well, we know that Mott is an old college and celebrating its 100-year anniversary this year. We know that it has a number of satellite facilities and has a middle college for dual enrollment students. We know that you have an M-Tech center in Howell, and that M-Tech is designed to provide technical training for high-tech, high-pay, high-demand jobs. We know that you have a long association with the University of Michigan-Flint, and of course, with the Flint community. And we know you have a long history of being supported by and funded by the Mott family and the Mott Foundation. We know that the college provides affordable and marketable programs for a large number of students, many of whom work or learn remotely or at least in a hybrid remote way. In terms of the mission statement, the mission statement resonates with us because community colleges fill an increasingly important role in educating students. And they do so in a cost-effective way. And obviously, cost for education is one of the issues that's facing all educational institutions. Community colleges provide marketable skills in a cost-effective way that allows people to actually go out and support themselves. Even for people whose ambition is to go to a four-year college, it provides a cost-effective way to start in the first two years and then transfer if that's what they want to do. It also resonates with us because Mott provides these goals of education in a culturally diverse community with some economic and financial challenges. And it's an important role that it plays in the community to educate students to go out and reach their goals, educational and financial.
Thank you. Could you explain how you see your role in representing Mott Community College? Would you be the principal attorney working with Mott Community College? And if so, how should we expect that relationship to be maintained?
I would be the primary contact for the college, at least initially. I certainly would be providing some of the services in my area of expertise for the college. If it was a matter that involved, for example, Tom's expertise or other attorneys, they would be handling the matter. We always allow our clients, when they get to know other attorneys in the firm, if they want to deal directly with them and not go through a primary contact or sort of a middle person, to do that. And as you work with other people, if you prefer to work with them directly and contact them directly, that's perfectly fine. If you prefer to have a central person that you contact all work through, that's fine, too. And if there's a situation where you're not sure who to contact because it's an area that we haven't worked with the college for before, you can always contact me, and we'll put you in touch with the right person. The relationship, we expect that to continue. I would continue to be the primary person if the college didn't know who to contact or wanted to work with me on an area within my expertise. And I would be in charge administratively in terms of preparing bills and communicating with the college in those regards. And that way, you'd always have some person that you knew could be contacted to answer specific questions if you didn't know who else might be an appropriate person within the firm. And we also, I should say, we have proposed and worked with, really, a team approach so that there isn't just one person who knows the college and knows its issues. If you, for some reason, you can't reach me, there'll always be other people, including Tom and Sarah and others, who are familiar with the college, have worked with them, are available, and can either help directly or put you in touch with the right people who can.
Mr. Freeman?
Please explain the role of the board attorney as you currently understand it.
We understand the role of the board attorney to keep the Board of Trustees advised as to legal issues as they develop that may be new, to answer questions that the board may have or the board through its representative may have regarding legal issues and matters, to help it work through situations that involve legal issues, and to represent it in litigation and adversarial... and adversarial matters, as well as to advise the Board in negotiations and preparation of contracts, leases, finance matters, and other agreements as needed, essentially to act as the outside general counsel for the college.
Tell us what you know about the Open Meetings Act. Give us an example of a recent example of how you or your firm addressed a question or were involved with a complaint or issue.
And by the way, I don't intend to hog the microphone all night, but it just so happens that the questions I'm answering are at the front, and the ones Tom and Sarah are answering are a little further down, but you will hear from them both. The Open Meeting Act requires a public body to meet in open session to deliberate towards or decide a matter of public interest. There are notice requirements for meetings that are going to be held. There are also some statutory exceptions that allow the public body to go into a closed session for certain limited purposes, that are exempt from public disclosure for a variety of reasons. But even when the board is permitted, or the public body is permitted to go into closed session, a closed session cannot be used to vote on or deliberate towards a decision on a matter of public interest. That has to be done only in an open session. The purpose of the Open Meetings Act is transparency, which means that if there's ever a challenge to whether something should have been done in an open meeting or not in an open meeting, the courts tend to favor openness and tend to favor finding that something should be done in an open meeting and not in another way. With regard to some recent examples, we recently were asked to conduct an investigation on behalf of a public body that had received employee complaints about its Board Chair. We conducted the investigation. We advised the Board as to its Open Meeting Act obligations, and then how to properly notice, vote on, and go into closed session to discuss the issue before, and then to keep the discussion in the closed session on track and not stray beyond what was permissible in a closed session, and then to go back into open session. A second example, we recently advised an educational institution regarding interpretation of its president's contract, and how to interpret and implement the Open Meetings Act with regard to open sessions and closed sessions to discuss a possible separation of the president.
Mr. Rans? What qualities do you think make an effective Board Attorney?
I think, to summarize it, you could say four things: accessibility, experience, practicality, and results. Obviously, the Board needs to be able to reach its attorney when there's an issue, sometimes pressing or emergency issues, and you need to be able to reach the primary attorney or an attorney on the college's team promptly when there's something that needs to be addressed promptly. And the attorney that you reach needs to have the experience to be able to help guide the Board through the particular issue at hand. The advice also should be practical in terms of trying to solve the issue, and that's what we view our role to be, is to help clients, including institutions of higher education, to find solutions to problems that it has. It's not just an intellectual legal exercise, it's a problem that's being faced by the institution that it needs to figure out a way to address, and we try to help find those practical solutions to do so in a cost-effective way. And of course, all of this has to be measured against the results that are achieved to address the particular issue in which we're being consulted.
How do you handle conflict?
I'll turn this over to Tom.
So you'll notice a different voice now. So, when we saw this question and talked about it internally, we weren't sure if you were asking conflicts of interest or more adversarial conflict situations, so if you don't mind, I'll answer both. From conflicts of interest, it's important to realize that we represent the college through the Board of Trustees, but we don't represent any particular Board member, or the administrators, or employees of the college. And so, much like the question on who would be the primary person at Butzel that you would be dealing with, it's very important for whoever's representing the college to understand who the decision-makers are, how that process works, how ultimate decisions are made, and who they should be listening to and who not to be listening to. So that's very important. We also have an internal intake matter to make sure that we don't take on matters that are directly adverse to existing clients. And if we ever had that situation, we would recuse ourselves from the new matter. So if we have two existing clients, and they're, one has a matter that's going to be adverse to the other, we would not be able to take that. We also have, I guess, situational or positional conflicts that are not technically conflicts, but if we were asked to represent a client that had an interest adverse to another client of ours, even if it wasn't directly adverse, we wouldn't take that either. So, we protect that. We have a very good vetting internal process to make sure that doesn't happen. If the question is more on how we handle adversarial relationships, much as Dan mentioned, our primary focus as a firm is to find solutions for our clients. That may require us to advocate forcefully for our clients, but we're not in the habit of creating problems just for the sake of creating problems. We are primarily focused, whether it's litigation, employment law, transactional negotiating contracts, our primary job is to achieve results for our clients. We're very respectful and collegial to the other side in any matter, and again, we will be as forceful as needed, but that's our primary goal, is to get results for the client.
Wendy?
Good evening. Number seven, what experience do you have in handling Title IX complaints?
So, in our experience, colleges and universities typically handle their Title IX investigations and their hearings internally through a Title IX office and coordinator. And so, we're not usually typically involved in investigating the internal investigations of Title IX complaints, but we have and are continuing, I have one matter that's ongoing right now, where I'm litigating a Title IX claim. That case is currently pending in federal court. It's for a prominent private college in which two female students allege that the college violated Title IX by not adequately investigating and addressing their allegations that male students had sexually assaulted them. In terms of internal investigations, which is another question, I'll cover it a bit here, the firm and myself personally have conducted numerous internal investigations involving various levels of employees, from staff and coaches to the president of a college, involving allegations of unlawful discrimination, harassment, sexual harassment, and other misconduct. And as Mr. Tuckell alluded to, and actually went through earlier, before I did start my civil practice, I was also an Assistant Prosecuting Attorney. I actually specialized in handling domestic violence and sexual assault cases, so I'm very familiar with those types of sexual misconduct cases, the sensitive investigations, as well as investigations in which during these sensitive investigations, you have to uncover the truth and also build rapport with witnesses.
Thank you. Number eight, tell us how your firm has supported diversity?
So, we strive to provide a diverse and inclusive environment at Butzel, so that all viewpoints are welcome and encouraged, and so that we have a wide array of perspectives at the decision-making process for our firm, but also in representing clients. And we also believe it's important to give back to the communities, particularly those that are underrepresented, and so we do that in a number of ways. Through our hiring process, and I was, prior to being the Chair of the Corporate Department, I was the Chair of the Recruiting Committee for a decade. We participate in the Wolverine Bar Association during our summer program. We recruit at non-traditional law schools like Howard University to expand our applicant base when we're looking for summer associates who ultimately become attorneys at our firm. We participate in the Loyola High School Internship Program in Detroit, where we bring one student a year or semester to shadow, as a high school, a senior, to shadow attorneys in our practice, to learn the different practices at our firm. We also look beyond just the pedigree of a resume when we're recruiting laterals. We kind of look for life experiences, we look for diverse backgrounds. Internally, we work to develop and promote attorneys with qualified diverse backgrounds, qualified attorneys with diverse backgrounds, and you see that reflected in our leadership roles, where we have many, four of our major departments are chaired by women and minorities and on the board as well. We have a very forward-focused DEI committee that is very active doing internal educational programs for our attorneys and staff. We also, several years ago, hired an outside consultant who specializes in DEI to do a full-service kind of survey of our firm. They interviewed every single employee of the firm, attorneys and non-attorneys alike, to get a better sense of where we were, where we thought we were, and where we were when it comes to diversity and inclusion, and then to help coach us on where we can get better, where our blind spots are. And then every six months to a year, she does a refresher with us and does different focused presentations on DEI. And then for community involvement, one of the things we take great pride in, have for several years now, is we participate in an annual backpack giveaway for one elementary school in inner-city where we have offices. So we've done this in Detroit many years. We recently opened an office in Grand Rapids, and we did that, this past year, we did a backpack giveaway where we give a grade, all the students a backpack filled with supplies for the year. We also have a charitable trust where we donate to charitable causes. Last year, we donated over $60,000, and we seek our employees to match what the charitable fund is raising. We also have many pro bono services that we provide to individuals and communities in, again, mainly underrepresented communities.
Jeff?
Could you please explain the core values of your firm?
So, the simple answer is represented on the cover page of our website, if you go to our website. Two words: trust, always. And we don't ask for our clients to trust us. We make a situation where they will trust us. We strive for quality service. We internally demand excellence of all of our attorneys by mentoring and training younger attorneys. We have high expectations of all of the attorneys at our firm to provide quality service to our clients, so that we can generate maximum value for our clients, so that basically you get the biggest bang for your buck at our firm. We do focus on teamwork, hence the three of us here today. We're very collaborative in our approach to client service. As Dan mentioned, we want a client that has a point of contact, but also has several points of contact in case one's not available, or you don't know exactly who to turn to. Most of our clients, we've got a large team of support that knows the client's needs and will help out as and when needed. And again, as mentioned previously, we're very results-oriented. We want to understand what our clients want, and we will deliver that.
What's your experience with internal investigations? And please explain the Upjohn warning, if you would please?
The firm and myself personally have conducted numerous internal investigations for both private and public institutions, and as part of any internal investigation, the investigator, I myself, provide an Upjohn warning. The purpose of that is to allow the attorney to gather information that's protected under the attorney-client privilege, while avoiding misunderstandings about who the client is, preserving corporate control over that privilege, and, and I think this is one of the most important things, promoting open employee disclosure within that framework. There's also another warning that I don't know if you are aware of, many attorneys are not, and it's, I think, important for the college, and that's called a Garrity Warning. A Garrity Warning has to be provided when a public employee is compelled to make self-incriminating statements during an internal investigation. And so, the typical scenario you would see is when I, perhaps as the attorney, is questioning under the threat of a job loss if the employee refuses to answer questions pertaining to their duties honestly and fully, and when those employees' answers to questions concerning their official duties could expose that employee to criminal charges. So it could be something like a, which I know you have, a public safety department. It could be, it could come up in the public safety context, it could come up in workplace policy violation probes that could constitute crimes, whether they're physical, like an assault and battery, or financial, such as embezzlement or fraud, or research. And so, it's a specific type of warning, and if you don't give that warning, then there are consequences if you terminate that employee. I have seen courts for aggrieved employees who were subject to discipline without the warning argue that the omission amounted to a constitutional violation, which is under Section 1983 claim, and that has resulted in substantial civil judgments. So I have been involved in cases involving major prominent national law firms, and I have seen that they were even unfamiliar with such a Garrity Warning, and it had huge consequences for our case. Thank you.
Tell us your understanding of the CLEARY Act.
The CLEARY Act is, to a large extent, a consumer protection act, which allows students and prospective students and their families to understand the environment of the school by requiring reporting on matters involving campus safety. The Act requires any educational institution that receives federal financial support to report a variety of statistics regarding crimes occurring on or near campus, and to take steps to enhance campus safety. And a failure to promptly and accurately report statistics that are required by the CLEARY Act can have serious consequences for the educational institution that fails to make an accurate report.
What are the most recent developments surrounding the issue of free speech on campus?
There are a couple of issues that immediately come to mind involving freedom of speech on campuses, and two that come to mind immediately. The first is dealing with speech regarding the ongoing Israel-Hamas war that has resulted in protests of various sorts by groups supporting both entities on campuses throughout the country. And it's important in that regard for the institution to figure out a way, and some have done this much more successfully than others, to allow speech or protest by groups and individuals with very different views about the situation on topics which are very emotional to them, without restricting speech based on the content of the speech, which would be impermissible, and while ensuring campus safety and walking that fine line between protected speech and speech that may be advocating or inciting violence. So that's one obvious development that many institutions of higher education are facing today. Another ongoing issue with regard to free speech on campus is non-harassment and non-bullying policies that may be overly broad, and therefore restrict speech which may be protected constitutionally. A number of institutions of higher education, both four-year and community colleges, have been cited recently by FIRE, which is the Foundation for Individual Rights and Expression, as having policies that are overly broad, and therefore would violate constitutional free speech requirements that have very broad statements, such as, you know, any statement that someone finds offensive, or that somebody thinks is harassing them, in really the everyday sense of the word, not the legal sense of the word, is prohibited, and those would include prohibiting speech, which would be otherwise constitutionally protected. So those are two recent developments that come immediately to mind.
Have you ever advised an educational institution to perform a review of their ethics? Did you do the review? What are the three components of ethics policy? And we're down to two minutes.
We have recommended that our clients periodically review all of their policies to make sure they're current and compliant with the law. And we've created, reviewed, and revised a variety of policies for institutions of higher ed, but we have not been specifically asked to create or revise ethics policies, but certainly would be available to do so. I think three key components of an ethics policy would be a clear definition of prohibited conduct, a requirement to disclose conflicts, including financial conflicts, and a process for investigating complaints regarding Board members and other officers and high-level administrators.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for us?
I think we have a couple. One I'd like to ask, I know that some programs, like the Physical Therapy Tech Program, are offered only on certain satellite facilities. Can a student take all of the courses necessary? Can a student take all of the courses necessary to get a degree only at one of the satellite facilities of the college?
To answer that question correctly, Jason?
Repeat the question for me one more time.
Yeah, my question was, I know that some programs are only offered at satellite facilities, and can a student take all of the courses necessary to get a certificate or degree only at a satellite facility, or must there be some courses taken at the main campus?
No, we would offer, I think you mentioned the PT program is the one, yes, they would be able to complete their degree at PT, at Southern Lakes, yes.
I have one other question, and then if there's time permitted, I'll let Tom or Sarah ask some, if they have them. I know that there are dual enrollment students on campus, and they can obviously create new issues because some of them are minors. How many or what percentage of the student body are dual enrollment students?
Well, we house a Mott Middle College on our campus. We count them in our total enrollment. In the fall, I believe they approximated anywhere from 17% to 18% of our total enrollment. And the concept of a middle college is to immerse them into the regular college experience. So all of the, all of the concerns and things that you raise, we certainly adopt in our programming in relationship to their age and so forth. But we work with the Mott Middle Colleges administration through GIST, the Genesee Early Independent School District, when it comes to those kind of endeavors. So that's a partnership between us and GIST.
Thank you. Is this time permit for Tom or Sarah to ask a question?
We're out of time. I suspected that.
Sorry.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for listening to us.
Do you guys want to take that or keep going, and then if we need a break later on, we'll take a break? Keep going, keep going, keep going. Sue, keep going. Okay, keep going. Jordan, would you introduce our next speakers?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Next up, we have Michael Weaver, Audrey Forbush, and Chanelle Thomas from Plunkett Cooney.
Thank you. Take about 30 minutes. The first five minutes, you'll give us an overview of your law firm, and then each board member will be asking you questions. There's 14. Take about a minute and a half to answer the questions, and now if we'll, and then after we've gone through it, we will look at our grades of all the firms, and then we will decide after everyone's, we might not be able to get back with you this evening, but you will hear from us by tomorrow. Thank you very much.
Excellent.
Thank you. I'm a thorn between two roses here, so I very much appreciate the opportunity to be here today. On behalf of Plunkett Cooney and Chanelle and Audrey, we're thrilled to have this opportunity. Plunkett Cooney's been in business since 1913, and when I looked at this, I thought there sure is a lot of similarities between Plunkett Cooney and Mott. We've got a little over 100 years. You guys are celebrating your 100-year anniversary, and I think that's pretty impressive. Over the last 100 years, we've both had some magnificent transformations. We've both moved forward in some good times and some bad times, and we've both succeeded. As you see in our RFP, we represent about 21 different colleges and universities. I also represent a lot of school districts throughout really South Michigan, Bay City on down. So I have a lot of experience involving schools, higher education, both high school and the like, and then colleges and community colleges. I some work with Lansing Community College more recently. That's gone quite well. Our firm has, in my opinion, generated more law that's beneficial to schools and municipalities than any other firm in the state of Michigan. We have an appellate department that is really second to none. Look, our goal is that you don't get into litigation, and I think that's one of the roles of a board attorney, but if you do get into litigation, we are comfortable handling that. We were on the ground floor of creating an entity called the Michigan Municipal League, which is hot and heavy with municipalities, and I think there's a lot of carryover between educational institutions and municipalities. I'm a product of a community college. I went to Macomb Community College, and it worked for me. And I know that community colleges have a very significant role. There's a lot of reasons why people go to community colleges that are, and it's not just the curriculum. For me, I didn't have a lot of money. I probably wasn't ready to move away from home, and I spent two years at Macomb Community College and got a ton of courses out of the way at a more affordable price. And I know that Mott Community College offers that same opportunity to people. When I look at the, and Audrey's going to talk about the mission in a minute, but when I look at it for Mott Community College, the mission, it talks about wanting to provide a high education at a good value. And I look at our mission statement, and we say we want to provide quality legal services at a good value. And so I think that, you know, that is just another area where our two companies, our two entities, our two beings are a lot alike. I look at the Board of Trustees, and I see diversity. I look at the President, and I see diversity. I look at the Executive Cabinet, and I see diversity. And I look back at Plunkett Cooney, and we're a very diverse group. You know, when I came to Plunkett Cooney in 1990, this wouldn't have been the panel that would have come and spoke to you. Everybody would have looked just like me, and it's not like that anymore. And I know we have a diversity policy that is quite similar to the DEI policy here at Mott Community College. We have an individual named Laurel McGifford, probably one of the finest attorneys that I've ever practiced with. She has now done practicing law and solely focuses on diversity, equity, and inclusion. She was just awarded an award by Crane's Detroit Business as one of the notable leaders in DEI for 2023. When I look at the accreditation and the different offerings that Mott Community College has for its students, I see about 46 associate degrees and a ton of other certificates. I compare that to Plunkett Cooney, and we have, you know, experts in the law recognized in about 60 areas of the law. So again, another similarity between Plunkett Cooney and Mott Community College. I think we make a great team. I think that the fact that we have an office right down Court Street, when I looked at the other firms that were coming here, I didn't see any of them that had an office that close to your facility here. And so, again, I'll just say we're very happy to be here. We're very honored and privileged to be here, and now we'll move to the questions. Unless you have a question for me, I'm happy to answer.
Sue, we'll have our first two questions.
First of all, hello.
Hello.
Tell us what you know about Mott Community College, and why does our mission resonate with you?
Hi, I'm Audrey Forbush. I'm your local connection. I work right down the road in Flint. I live in Genesee County. I've been a resident here for about 30 years. And what I know about Mott Community College is that it works. It works for Genesee County. It works for this entire community, and you have an excellent reputation. I have family members that have attended Mott Community College. I have family members in your nursing program right now, and we know how important you are to the community. And your mission statement resonates with us, just like Mike said. You want high quality. We provide the highest quality legal services possible. You want it at affordable prices, and you want to provide affordable education in this community, which is a very diverse multicultural community. And we understand wanting to promote your community. We try to be, Plunkett Cooney, we try to be a part of the communities that we work in, that we serve in. We're a part of the Genesee County Bar Association. We are a part of the holiday gift-giving that the Bar Association sponsors. Actually, your Law Enforcement Regional Training Academy is near and dear to my heart. I have a law enforcement legal practice that also allows me at times to teach over at your lovely annex campus on Thompson Road, which is about a half a mile from where I live, which is always convenient. And Rhonda Stowers, also in our Flint office, teaches at the Police Academy itself. So we are well-connected to Mott Community College, and we value what you bring to the students. I love, you know, your dual enrollment, your high school dual enrollment programs that so many young people take advantage of, which, you know, my nieces and nephews have all taken advantage of to gain early college credits. And you give to this community the needed lift by making access to education affordable. And that's one of our missions is, we don't want to cost you money. We want to save you money. We don't want you to be in costly litigation. We provide training that helps you avoid costly mistakes and litigation. We provide FOIA training, OMA training, sexual harassment training. We have all of that in our back pocket that we can provide to you to keep your costs down and to make Mott Community College remain affordable.
Well, can you explain how, can you explain how you see your role in representing Mott Community College? Would you be the principal attorney working with Mott Community College? And so, how should we expect that relationship?
So I would be the lead contact, but as I indicated earlier, we have people who are experts in a number of different areas, 60, roughly 60 different areas of the law. I would be the primary contact, but we can always get you to a person who, so I don't have to reinvent the wheel. If someone's already dealt with an issue for a college or a university, and they can instantly give you an answer, I'd rather you had a fast answer at a reasonable price. As the board attorney, I would have access to our people like Chanelle and Audrey and others, but I am always available. I, a little embarrassed by this, I'm in the office before 5:00 a.m. I'm usually there until about 6:30, and then I have my phone on until about 8:30, 9:00 at night. So I know some of your board meetings might run later than that, but I might be at those board meetings. But I think one of the most important things is, I'm accessible. We're all accessible, and you can get an answer quickly and hopefully at the most cost-efficient price point for you folks.
Michael?
Okay. Please explain the role of the board attorney as you currently understand it.
So I think the board attorney is a trusted advisor. I think it's someone who has discretion. I think it's someone who understands at the same time, and we'll have to kind of figure this out for this particular board, understands who they're supposed to talk to, the chain of command, and the like. Again, I think it's important for the board attorney to be accessible. I think it's important for the board attorney to be able to give you a legal opinion, give you guidance, and to the extent we can't avoid litigation, steer you through the litigation. Again, that requires a certain amount of expertise that we're blessed with at Plunkett Cooney to have expertise and people who, a lot of them work the knucklehead hours that I work, frankly, so they're always available to answer your questions. And so I think that when people say trusted advisor, there's a lot more to it, but I tried to flush that out a little bit for you.
Tell us what you know about the Open Meetings Act. Give us an example of a recent example of how you or your firm addressed a question or involved with a complaint or issue.
Well, I'm the co-chair of the Governmental Law Practice Group for Plunkett Cooney, and so the Open Meetings Act, the Freedom of Information Act, those are acts that we deal with daily. We actually have an attorney in our Flint office, Rhonda Stowers, who is an OMA expert. When, we have offices all over the state. When we have a question about OMA, we automatically call Rhonda. She is an expert. I attend meetings all the time, and we experience OMA all the time. We know about the publication, the notice requirements, Robert's Rules of Procedure. We know about when you can go into executive session. I can't tell you, because we're litigation lawyers, I go to a lot of public entity meetings for settlement authority or to update on litigation. I can't tell you how many entities don't know that you need a roll call vote to go into closed session. They don't understand that you have to have a specific motion regarding specific litigation that will have a detrimental financial impact should it be discussed in open session. I have had crazy situations with the OMA where I've needed to go into closed session to discuss pending litigation, but one of my township board member's wife was the plaintiff, and they wouldn't, we couldn't get a motion passed to go into closed session. And I was effectively handcuffed because I couldn't give legal advice in public, as he wanted me to do, because his wife was sitting next to me. We've had all sorts of bizarre situations, including one that we've seen a few times with regard to the confidentiality in closed session and having to remind people about the fiduciary duties that they have when they're in closed session and the privileges that attach to that. And, you know, the keeping of the minutes and the nondisclosure of the minutes. I had one entity in a northern community who shall remain nameless. We left closed session, and the board member went out and spoke to the press about what we just talked about. Things like that happen. And we actually do training on that for new boards. We do it after elections, and we go over all the rules. We actually have a quick reference guide for FOIA and for the OMA to help with the new members.
Make an effective board attorney.
I think knowledge and experience are probably the top two. I've been practicing since 1990. I've been working with municipalities and higher education institutions since probably about 1992. I've seen just about every complicated issue come down the pike, whether it's pre-litigation or in litigation. And I think a board attorney has to be, again, accessible, has to have the knowledge and the ability to give you a proper and a prompt piece of advice for your board, whether it's in litigation, or avoiding litigation, or pre-litigation, or investigation, or whatever it might be.
Okay. And how do you handle conflict?
Well, I'm a litigator. So, and I was sixth out of seven kids. So I learned conflict early on at the kitchen table. But as a litigator, I love conflict, but it's not always the best thing for my clients. So I try to avoid it where we can. But when it happens, we were talking earlier, remarkably, all three of us are Scorpios, and I said, I hate to lose. I mean, I just can't stand it. And so I am pretty aggressive in the conflict arena because that's how I was trained, and that's my makeup. And so while I try to avoid litigation for my clients, when it happens, I'm prepared. I'm over-prepared. I'm more prepared than the other side. Big secret. You don't have to be the smartest person in the world to be a lawyer. You just have to outwork the other side. And I've never failed at that.
Good evening. Number seven, what experience do you have in handling Title IX complaints?
Let's see if it works. There we go. I've handled Title IX investigations for different municipalities and for schools over the last 25 years. I have both conducted them or been a part of them or litigated Title IX claims. As you know, Title IX is going away a little bit because of the lack of monetary damages that are available now under Title IX. So I think Title IX might be starting to go away as far as all the claims that we get. I may be wrong, but you know, the plaintiff bar, they want to focus on something where they're going to make a lot of money. And Title IX is starting to be not the pot of gold that it used to be. And so I've done the interviews for Title IX. I typically start off with the individual who made the complaint. I have someone with me who's taking notes. I'm actually taking notes too, but I like to have a second person. We give all the appropriate warnings. You can't be retaliated against. If you feel retaliated against, please tell us. This interview is confidential under, you know, give them the law and why it's confidential. And I explain to them that we have to keep these investigations confidential, because if you tell somebody what I already asked you, then I might taint the investigation, and we certainly don't want that. And then the conclusion, my last set of instructions or questions is, who else should I interview? Who else would know something about this to either support or refute your claim? And then we go from there and do the interviews. It takes a good working knowledge of the policies of the entity that you're representing as well. So I always have that in my back pocket when we start the investigations.
Thank you. Number eight, tell us how your firm has supported diversity.
Well, as Mike mentioned, we actually have a diversity coordinator in our firm. She used to be a full-time lawyer. Now she's a full-time diversity officer for our firm. We also have a diversity committee, of which I'm a co-chair of that committee. We meet monthly. We have a robust programming in our firm. We put on monthly events for all of our staff, whether it's Black History Month, Women's History Month, whether it's Hispanic Heritage Month, Asian Pacific Month. We just recently had a wonderful presentation for Americans with Disabilities awareness. We had an LGBTQ presentation. We do them through webinars, personal presentations. Lawyers love to eat, so we do a lot. We try food in, you know, ethnic food, whatever, to our programming to bring more people out to get good participation. We also require mandatory diversity training within our firm. We just finished that up in October. We also had a mandatory leadership diversity training program at Michigan State's Technological Center in September. It is something that we are very committed to. Our clients deserve a diverse group of lawyers, and we believe that we are a better firm because of our diversity.
Could you please explain the core values of your firm? So our core values were, I'm sure there were core values before I came there, but about 20 years ago, we had a shareholder meeting, and we battled it out on what our core values would be. And they became service, excellence, integrity, and family. And we have a strong cultural culture that supports that. I'll tell you, while service and the like is incredibly important, I think integrity is at least as important. And I'll give you an example. I had a client where I had to produce a bunch of documents, and there was one document that was a smoking gun. It really, it really was bad for us. And he said, don't produce it. And I said, I'll absolutely produce it. They asked for it. They're entitled to it, and I'm going to win anyway. And so we did. And I told that client, if you ever said something to me like that again, I'll never work with him again. So while I never like to turn business away, I'm not going to let anything compromise integrity. And so I think that that benefits my clients in a lot of ways. Judges know if you're a truthful lawyer. Judges know if you're an honest lawyer. Judges know if you're a good lawyer. And I think focusing on our core values really shows through when you're in court, when you're in settlement negotiations, when you're in mediations and things like that. And so I think it's important that our core values were something that we all agreed upon as shareholders of the law firm about 20-ish years ago, maybe 25.
All right. Let's talk about internal investigations. How would you handle an internal investigation? And explain the function of the Upjohn warning, if you would, please.
Sure. The Upjohn warning is sort of a Miranda. It's sort of, it's telling the person being interviewed, there can be an attorney-client privilege, but we, the privilege actually belongs to the entity instead of to the individual. So if you and I are attorney-client, it's your privilege, not mine. But under the Upjohn warning, it really becomes the entity's privilege and not the person being interviewed. So even though some of them may think that they have an attorney-client privilege with the person doing the interview, they really don't. And so you have to explain that at the outset. So I've done internal investigations, and it's typically employment-type matters, where much like I responded earlier, you typically start with the individual who made the complaint. You give them the appropriate warnings, including the Upjohn warning, and then you move forward with a confidential interview of that individual. I always conclude with, who else can I interview? Who else can support you? Who else might refute you? What other people do you think I should interview? And so then, once you get done with all the interviews, and you lay that over the policies of your client, you determine if there's any merit at all to the complaint. And then after that, then you guide your board through what procedure they should take in responding to that investigation, whether it means someone gets terminated, someone gets additional training, or whatever the remedial action might be. Sometimes there's none. Sometimes the complaint's not borne out as truthful or accurate.
Tell us your understanding of the CLARI Act.
So the CLARI Act's a reporting act, and it's, I see it mostly, people focus mostly on it for candidly sexual assault crimes. But the public institution has to report, has to record and report criminal activity on campus. I frankly believe it extends beyond campus. For example, Eastern Michigan had some issues recently, and those issues were at fraternity houses. I think they should have been included in their CLARI report. I don't know if they did or they didn't. But the CLARI Act is important in that, I don't know, I don't, my concern is I don't know that a lot of parents know about it. When my kids went away to college, I looked at the reports from the school where they went, just maybe just to make myself feel better. I don't know. But it's certainly a mandatory reporting act. I'm not positive, in my opinion, that it's enforced as much as it could be or should be. I mean, it's, it's a pretty daunting task to prepare your report. And I think about the individuals who might audit it. I don't see a lot of audits of CLARI reports. But it's, in theory, it's a fantastic requirement for all public institutions.
What are the most recent developments surrounding the issue of free speech on campuses?
Hi, I am Chanel Thomas. Nice to see all of you. I think when it comes to the most recent developments regarding free speech, the best way that it can be described is that there are more developments in questions than there are developments in answers. And I think specifically what we're dealing with is the current war over in Israel, and campus institutions are having to deal with students and rather certain guests should be allowed on campus, rather certain demonstrations should be allowed on campus, what professors should be able to say and/or teach. And I think what's happening right now is there isn't a lot of litigation and/or guidance from the U.S. Supreme Court right now, just because the topic is so new. But we anticipate seeing it, you know, in the upcoming years. And I think what needs to be, what everyone needs to remember is that the U.S. Supreme Court is going to be very, very hesitant, and they are always hesitant, when it comes to restricting First Amendment speech on any individual. But in this context, there's a huge, you know, balance between protecting First Amendment rights and free speech rights, and then you have the issue of campus safety and student safety, because as we know, a lot of these demonstrations and speeches, you know, result in violent occurrences occurring on campus and things like that. So there is a balance thing that the U.S. Supreme Court will have to determine, but like I said, they have not done that yet. And ultimately, all of these instances are going to be taken up on a case-by-case basis, right? So there is no solid guidance or policy that's going to be in place that says, if this person comes to speak, then this, or this person, you know, isn't allowed. The U.S. Supreme Court is going to be very, very hesitant to make, you know, solid decisions and policies like that, and it likely won't happen. So it will be evaluated on a case-by-case basis. And right now, like, you know, we're basically just having to see how it all unfolds, because right now there are more questions than answers.
Thank you. Have you ever advised an educational institution to perform a review of their ethics? Did you do the review? What are the three key components of ethics policy?
Well, I have not been asked to review educational institutions' ethics policies. And I asked Audrey and Chanel, and none of us have. But I have significant thoughts about it. I really have kind of four focuses. Responsibility to the profession, responsibility to the students, responsibility to the school community, and then more recently, I think it's a technology issue. I'm scared to death of AI and what it's going to do to educational institutions. And I haven't quite seen anyone come up with a great AI policy yet, but I'm sure it's coming. I mean, it kind of stems from the plagiarism-type policies, but I just haven't seen a good AI policy yet. I think, you know, my wife was a teacher at one time. I think they're underappreciated and underpaid. That's personal opinion, coming from a doting husband, I suppose. But I think that when teachers have the responsibility and recognize their responsibility to the profession, that it bleeds over to both administration and to the students. I think that resolving ethical issues by, you know, confronting them in a peaceful fashion, and even with good-spirited debate, pointing or working your way through them is good. It's much like what Chanel talked about with First Amendment issues. I think promoting professional development with teachers likewise is beneficial to the ethics for any entity, especially a higher education entity. There's a Michigan Code of Ethical, of Educational Ethics. I mean, I think that's a bit of a minimum for educational professionals to abide by. And of course, as even the mission of Mauch Community College states, I mean, we want to provide a great educational experience to our students. I mean, I've looked up some of the alumni. I looked at folks, I looked at folks who got awards out there, like Judge Godola and Judge Roberts and some others. And I'm like, this, 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 this institution does it right. And so I apologize that none of us have had to review or rewrite anyone's ethical policies. I've done a lot of, in my interviews, I've done a lot of work around the ethical policies and involving the ethical policies. We just haven't had to write them or rewrite them.
Do you have any questions for us?
What are your expectations for your legal counsel? Would, do you want someone who will be attending board meetings, have office hours? Some of the entities we represent, we pick an afternoon, and we're available during a certain timeframe in case people need to walk in with questions. How do you envision that relationship?
We expect you to be at our board meetings. We also have committee meetings. We have a personnel committee and a finance. In case anything should come up in those meetings, you assist with those. And to have the open dialogue, usually the contact person between the board attorney and the board is the chair of the board.
Okay. And that's always a question that we have. I'm glad you answered it, as to who our contact person is and who is allowed to contact us. Oftentimes, we'll find with certain communities that everybody wants to contact the lawyer, and we need to go through channels. It sounds like you've addressed that already.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for coming on.
Thank you. Have a great night. Thank you. Have a great night.
Jordan, would you introduce our next candidates?
Yes, Mr. Chair. And finally, we have Alan Vanderland and Robert Blamer from Cummings McLory Davis and Acho PLC.
The interview will take 30 minutes. The first five minutes is when you're to give us an overview of your law firm. And then we'll have 14 questions. And you'll have about a minute and a half for each question. And then we'll fill out the evaluation. And then we'll take care of that after you guys have left. And we'll let you guys know tomorrow how it went. So, thank you. Could you please give us your presentation now?
One of your first questions is, what do we know about Mott Community College? And my, my history with Mott Community College goes back to the 60s. My father was a basketball coach, teacher, physical education director, chairman of the social sciences, and retired as vice president. I worked here. I spent my summers here. I went away to school. But one of the things that became embedded in me, growing up with my father and my mother, who was a professor at Flint University of Michigan, is the necessity to have Mott Community, or to have community colleges in rendering effective, inexpensive, quality education to those in this area. Our firm, I joined our firm in law school in 1979. Our firm in the 80s formed the MMRA, which is a self-insured program for municipalities. And sister organization is the Michigan Community College organization, for which Alan is the general counsel and for which we do their liability defense work. We grew and we have approximately 43 attorneys now. Our principal area of practice is municipal defense. And we have a vast background of people in higher education with experience. We've had a number of our lawyers leave our firm because we represented the community colleges as their general counsel and they formed law firms or legal departments around these folks. And we have folks that have left us, become general counsel, and now have come back. So we have a vast experience. I was just telling Alan, one of the things that happened in our Livonia office this morning was one of our attorneys that just rejoined us is involved in a rather heated Title IX investigation. And so we've got a vast experience when it comes to higher education and a very wide breadth of lawyers.
Thank you. The first question will be from Sue Couch. She'll take your other first two questions and then we'll go around the room.
Tell me what you know about Mott Community College and why does our mission resonate with you?
Well, Mott Community College was, when I was growing up, went junior college. And then it became Genesee Community College, and then Mott eventually. And I've spent a lot of time here at Mott. And as I said in my introduction, embedded in my education, my kids' education, who have both gone to community colleges, my wife was a student here at Mott Community College. I grew up and was a volunteer statistician on Mott's basketball team and traveled with the team in high school, understand Gooch. And so I understand what Mott stands for and how desperately that this area needs to have access to quality education with flexibility, so you can work and still go to, and go to school. And for my kids, who didn't go to Mott, because I moved away from Flint to go to law school and never came back, but they both spent two years in community college. My wife attended Mott. She eventually went back to Walsh and became a CPA. But it's very instrumental, Mott in my life and community college organizations in my family's life. Everyone in my family are educators, except myself. I guess I'm the black chief of the family. But between my brother, who was a college professor, and all my uncles, aunts, who are either college professors or educators, we understand what a community college purpose is and what a vital function it renders.
And explain how you see your role in representing Mott Community College. Would you, and would you be the principal attorney working with Mott College? And if so, how should we expect that relationship to be maintained?
I know you've listened to four previous law firms. And so my answer is probably not going to be all that much different. So let me take questions two and three together, since I know you're probably sick of being here and listening to lawyers. Look, as counsel, my role is to represent the college and to advise the president and its board as to various issues. I would be the principal attorney working with the college. And yes, it's a relationship that I would hope to maintain. I am general counsel for the MCC RMA. It is composed of 19 colleges, community colleges. I attend their quarterly meetings. I answer various questions that they have generally. Now, some of those colleges have their own general counsel. But questions that affect colleges, community colleges as a whole, generally are directed to me. Or if legislation's coming down the pike that they should be aware of or various issues. And that way, all the colleges, at least those 19, are on the same page when it comes to an answer that they get. And then, so far anyway, I haven't had any general counsel call me up and say, hey, that's not correct. So I'm also general counsel for Lake Michigan College in southwestern part of the state. And I, you know, handle issues for them. As board attorney, my job is to advise on legal matters, frankly, and to provide legal support and oversight on various issues to the college. Academics, human resources, contracts, employment, grants, whatever happens to come up. It is also to advise regarding new statutes, what the legislature is anticipating may come down the pike, is to review policies and revise them if asked to do so. And it's basically to provide the board with a heads-up as to if there is a problem or potential problem. My role is to keep the college out of pitfalls, legal pitfalls, so they don't get sued. In regard to number four, if I could just, I won't waste your time with a question, unless you have any questions. Number four, very familiar with the Open Meetings Act. Sunshine laws are there, obviously, to promote transparency and openness with the board in their decision-making. And also to advise boards, excuse me, in their decision-making and their meetings. I've advised boards in regard to compliance with the OMA and have litigated cases in which violations have been alleged against it. A recent example would be where a board in closed session made a decision and they voted, and they shouldn't have. So we avoided a lawsuit by admitting that we were wrong. We went later on into an open session where the issue was debated. It was voted on in open session and that took care of the problem. Basically, it's a do-over that's provided for under the act. In regard to five, I can tell you what qualities I think make an effective board attorney. Obviously, knowledge of the law is probably number one on the list. But then it's timeliness in a response, it's thoroughness, it's honesty in the response. In other words, it may not be exactly what you want to hear, but it's not my job to make those decisions as to whether or not you want to do something, but to advise you whether it's lawful to do something. In other words, I'll tell you if you have the right to do it. It's up to you to decide if you, if it's the right thing to do. I like number six, how do you handle conflict? It usually varies a lot. It depends on if it's with my wife, my children, my mechanics, one of the associates that work for me, or worked for us, another attorney, a judge. But overall, I handle conflict by not avoiding it. It helps to have relationships with someone. Ronald Reagan and Tip O'Neill had lunch every week. And the reason they did that is because Ronald Reagan thought that it's a lot more difficult to disagree with someone if you like them, if you have a relationship. And both men had mutual respect for each other. And they got, even though they disagreed, but they got a lot done. I think the key is to listen, obviously, to separate the issue from the personality, to explore compromise and a possible solution. And with everyone except my wife, sometimes you just have to agree to disagree. So that's generally how I handle conflict. My experience handling Title IX complaints is that I have hired investigators. You have to be a certified Title IX investigator, which is a long process to obtain one of those certifications. But once you do, they're the ones that do the investigation. I don't think you want your general counsel doing the investigation, because your general counsel then gets named in a lawsuit and now is a witness. Although we have Title IX certified attorneys in our law firm that do those investigations for other colleges. It is never for the college in which I'm general counsel. So I've retained those Title IX certified investigators and also worked with your Title IX coordinator or compliance officer, who really should be doing most of the work in those Title IX cases. That's what they get paid to do. Number eight, on diversity, that would be yours.
I don't know if you want to pose the question, but I have the question in front of me, so if I can proceed with that answer. I think the best way that we can show that we support diversity is the role that we've played within our firm. I became involved in management at Cummings McLory Davis and Acho in 1989. And one of the things I stressed as a managing partner in my 10 years as managing partner was the need to diversify in terms of the staff we have, the attorneys we have. And we've been successful in that regard. We have four female partners that are intimately involved in our decision-making process. We have a partner, a female partner, that runs our Kansas City office. It's our second biggest office that we have. We have 75% of our law clerks and paralegals are female. We have several, I would say five, black attorneys, African-American. That's down to three now, because in the last couple of months, we've had two of them go back into the public sector because of the stress that is involved in litigation, because it's very, very stressful, very, very time-consuming. We also have an Hispanic attorney. And we have stressed our need, not only at the management level of the staff, but also the partners, the need for there to be diversification. We're about to have somebody come back who left our office that's African-American, that was independent counsel or general counsel for a municipality. And he's going to come back, we believe, on enough counsel relationship. And somebody I knew 35 years ago. And part, he's, like I say, African-American. And we're very fortunate to have he and our other attorneys work with us on these types of issues.
Number nine.
Number nine is also my issue to speak on, but it's covered somewhat by Al, because our core value is to recognize, understand the law, recognize not only problems, but also anticipate problems. So we can go to you folks and we can counsel you how to avoid those problems. We have to recognize the legal issues as they become available or as they... We have to recognize the legal issues as they become available, or as they... Risk management is what we're talking about, to advise you folks about how to avoid the risk of litigation, and how to avoid these open meeting controversies and things of that nature, and to educate you on what the law is and give you the right information so you can make the right decisions. And the fundamental way to do that is close communication and rapid communication. I grew up in a world where we didn't have computers and we didn't have cell phones. Now with emails and cell phones, we need to be available for our clients twenty-four hours a day. I will tell you I'm not available twenty-four hours a day, because I work from usually seven until eight, and I turn my cellphone up at nine, but I do check it before I go to bed. Our attorneys will be available for you folks whenever you need to communicate, because that's what you need to have, is good, sound communication with your legal counsel.
I have twin girls who are teenagers, so my phone is always on, just in case. In regard to number ten, I do have experience with internal investigations. Those, as general counsel, I can do myself if it involves like theft, dishonesty, something that I don't have to hire an outside investigator to avoid the appearance of impropriety. The F. John warning, of course, as I know the previous law firms have told you, is when the college's lawyer explains that they represent the college and not the individual employee. Although, the communications between the college's counsel and the employee are privileged, and no one can make me or that employee disclose that information. The college is the client, the privilege is ours, and if we want to disclose the information to the government, for example, we can do so. As far as the Cleary Act, that's a federal law that requires colleges to disclose public annual security reports and crime statistics every October first. It must include statistics for the past three years and efforts to improve campus safety. The act requires schools to publish specific safety procedures, policies, and protocols. The act also requires that colleges to notify students and employees if there is a warning to students and employees of a specific event that has occurred and is on campus, or a threat that is deemed serious and continuing. In regard to free speech, recent developments, I drafted the free speech policy for Lake Michigan College and Baytonak Colleges. I don't think there's so much new issue surrounding free speech as there is an intensification of it, and that's because of the Middle East crisis. Free speech on college campuses is paramount. On the other hand, it is allowed to be restrained and can be to various areas. It cannot cause a substantial disruption in college activities. It cannot encourage violations of school rules, that it certainly is not allowed to promote illegal activity. But college certainly should be a place where students feel free to express themselves, subject to those limitations. In regard to thirteen, I have advised educational institutions to reform a review of their ethics policy, drafted the policies for Lake Michigan College and for Baytonak College on ethics. It's difficult to narrow that down to three key components, but if I had to, it would be conflict of interest, privacy, and professional conduct. Other components include integrity, honesty, responsibility, and accountability. But they are important. The reason why we drafted the policies for those two institutions, because they did not have ethics policies, and so we drafted ones for them. That, ladies and gentlemen, is our presentation. Unless you have any questions, thank you for your time.
Do you have any questions for us?
I do not. I would just, whether we are retained as general counsel or not, I'm proud to be here in front of you people in an institute that my family and my father was dedicated, and he would be proud for me to be here in front of this great institution. So I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I knew your father and mother. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this point, we're going to collect everything as you get it done, and then in about fifteen minutes, we'll have everything computed, we'll look at it on the screen, and then we'll make a decision.
Check, check, check.
Recove now?
When he said he turned up.
We're reconvene now. They're going to put the numbers up here in just a second and we'll look at those.
If you'd like, I can explain what we did. Do you want me to explain what we did, what that represents?
Why don't you go ahead and explain it?
Let's get it out first.
Okay, Larry, why don't you go ahead and explain?
So if we can... Hello, okay. So you can see that scores there by firm, part A, part B, that's in total by a summarization of everyone's sheets. So everyone cheats, we put in the whole numbers, and that's what I was back there doing was double-checking with Kimberly that the numbers were entered correctly. I double-checked the formulas just to make sure because we are working with the spreadsheet. The test came back that it was correct. So if we scroll to the bottom, you will see the displacement, the total scores. So you can see that in... Can we do a page break on that by any chance at the top? So the firms will show. These Google Sheets are nice for some things, but...
Kind of a challenge for others.
Well... Did you?
Yeah.
There we go. Yep, code, there we go. So there's your total scores by firm. The first, under subtitles, you'll see the first number is a part A score, the second number is a part B score, the total is below. And there's the five firms represented.
Are there any questions?
So did we vote on the top two or was there discussion or how is this? My understanding was that, I mean, we eliminate and then we vote on the ones, that's what we did last time. We ended up voting over the top two, on the top two, yeah. Because then we can argue merits with, you know, with each other or discuss merits with each other and point, counterpoint on these.
What is the pleasure of the board?
Yeah, definitely. We should at least do two or three we could discuss. I mean, there's two of them which are the low ones. I think given the presentations, I think it's really worthwhile for us to have a conversation about qualifications and what we individually think about the different firms which presented tonight.
Yep.
That's what we, that's what we signed up for, to do the right thing for the college. So, well, that's your opinion and that's fair, but I want to, I want to actually do the right thing for the college. So I'll start with my first comment, specific to the first presentation that we heard. My notes were they lacked any higher education experience, they have no experience with the Higher Learning Commission, they were unfamiliar with the mission of the college. All these questions were in hand beforehand. And basically, the response I heard was that we'll learn it, we'll figure it out. Even though they are the one firm that actually lacked any experience with higher education. So I guess I'm a little confused as to why someone who has no higher learning experience received that level of score. So, you know, in my, in my analysis and my experience working with this college, the two most qualified were Dickinson Wright and Plunkett Cooney, who actually did address, you know, actually gave really thoughtful responses, talked about Title IX, like the guy from Dickinson Wright talked about looking at even facilities and the built-out and how you remain in compliance with Title IX. Didn't really hear that from a lot of other people. You know, he has experience with Higher Learning Commission. Then you have Plunkett Cooney, who actually is very locally connected. It's actually, you know, they, they have, if you look at their, all the organization or the institutions that they work with, they have tons of higher learning experience with everybody that they work with. So I just don't know how we could suggest that someone who has no experience working with academia should be counsel for the college. So in my book, and I like the fact that Plunkett Cooney is local, that they do have a local office. So, but I'm just pretty shocked with the scores, for sure. And I'd like anyone to defend or tell me why we should have somebody with no higher learning experience or representing community colleges or academic institutions or a Higher Learning Commission is the appropriate entity to represent us. I think that from an optics perspective to the people that we have been asked to lead this college, that's really suspect. And, you know, it's like this is, you know, the first person was just our board chair's personal attorney, but that doesn't mean that he's qualified or his firm is qualified to actually advise this college on issues which are much more technical and sophisticated. His presentation did not really speak to... His presentation did not really speak to the qualifications that we've laid out, in my opinion.
Are there any other comments?
All right, well, the, the first one, the Garrett Miller, I thought in their present, in their package, I thought they had higher education. No? Okay. Well, Dixon Wright, I, I got carried on a whole lot. I really didn't care for him.
Because he had the qualifications and skill sets. I mean, he teaches this stuff, you know, Open Meetings Act, I mean, like literally, my only concern with him is the price point. Is that you're paying for the Cadillac version because
They're pretty pricey.
He, he represents the big dogs and, I mean, but if you really looked at qualification, he met all the qualifications by leaps and bounds, but it's the price point that concerned me. And I looked at with Plunkett Cooney at least, still has all those, they meet all the requirements and qualifications, but their price point is significantly less. And the breadth of what they represent as an organization or like all the different, if you look at all their competencies and what they do, there are pieces that the college could use, not just the academic aspects, but it's the, you know, land, litigation, human resources. They did actually give really great responses, which is actually why I thought they were probably the best suited for us, in my opinion, so, but...
Anyone else?
Yeah, I, I agree to a great degree with what Michael has said, but the thing that is absolutely a non-starter for me is the complete lack of experience that Garin, Lukow and Miller have. I mean, we're asking somebody who does not have any experience in the higher education field to be the board attorney for Mott Community College. And to me, I don't understand how that is even remotely possible. Now, and, and I do know that, because that's the gentleman that our chair brought in the one day, so I know that there's a relationship there, but that has, that should be completely aside because any relationship that our chair would have with him would be you paying him. And to me, it's almost a conflict because he was your personal attorney. And now the score is as high as it is over everybody else when he has zero experience in education, to me, just, it's unsettling at the very least.
Because when, when I heard him talk, he had said that he has did several volunteer cases at numerous
He volunteered
Universities.
No, at two schools. And he was a volunteer because his kids went to one of the schools and, and he was, he volunteered for the foundation for another school and they had asked him a couple, a question, and so he got involved in a legal, in a singular, singular legal issue for each of those two entities. But he's not been retained by any of them.
And I also, every single firm lacked something at some point. And every one of them said, well, then we'll reach out to a certain person or we'll ask for help or we'll ask, I mean, almost every one of them said that.
Yeah, but they said that within their own firm. The, the gentleman from Dickinson Wright, I mean, and again, they were, to me, far and away, the experts. Plunkett was who I scored highest. But they said, I don't do this, but this person does. Or we have people in the firm. The only, the only person that said that they would go outside the firm was, was they said that if, if it was something that had to do where there was a conflict with Garin, Lukow and Miller, he said, the firm doesn't have any experience. So they're going to have to go to another, so we're hiring them, but then we're going to have to go to another firm in order to get answers because we have to wait for the learning curve of, of the people that scored the highest here tonight to, to catch up on what the basics of being a higher education attorney is, a board attorney is. That's, that's the issue that I have with it. If, if I don't know, and Michael and I are partners and I can ask Michael, then that's one thing, but if neither he nor I know, that's a problem. I mean, because we're talking about spending the money of the college for this. So I, I just, I don't understand, I don't understand how the scoring could have been that skewed. For, I just don't understand how it could be that, that skewed.
Michael?
I think in the spirit of transparency, the last time we did this, we did not do aggregate scores, but we had to present everybody's individual scores. So we didn't do the full points, we actually showed each score from trustees, and I think that, that needs to be part of the public record.
We attended a conference in Las Vegas. There was a program for attorneys from community colleges all over the country. I attended that meeting. None of them had experience except a very few. And they were the ones asking all the questions.
So we found the one?
We know four or five.
We found the one that doesn't have the experience of all of the ones that, that we had through, we, we found, yeah, four or five, because there were six originally that responded, we found six that had the experience, so they're the outliers in this? No, I don't believe you. I don't believe you. I don't, I don't know how you could have sat in that room.
You're the one chair for us for the ACCT.
No, I'm questioning it with you. I'm questioning it with you because I don't know how you could possibly have gone to that room and, and it come up, hey, how many of you guys have experience? No hands go up, so that's how you got your information?
No, I listened to the people at the meeting. If you'd been in attendance, you would have seen the same thing I did.
I'm not an attorney, that was four attorneys, and I was in attendance. I went to the ones that were for trustees, that was, that was for attorneys. It was for board attorneys.
Any trustee could attend any meeting.
It was four attorneys.
Therefore, what's the pleasure of the board?
So I would caution the chair that this board has been making some very poor choices for a while, and everybody's watching. Everybody's going to be talking. Everybody, this is a public session, people are going to be able to watch this on YouTube. They're going to hear what people had to say and revisit it. So I think we should be very careful about the way that we move forward in this because right now, I've been here for 12 years and I've worked with different attorneys on this board, and I was very surprised at the lack of preparation and actually credentials of the first candidate compared to the other people. I think a lot of people will be questioning, why did we choose the first person? This is the unanswered question. I think that everybody should think very carefully about who they choose because people will talk.
And I have, I have another point. Trustee Freeman indicated that in transparency, that the individual scores be shown, and that got sidestepped.
Yeah.
So I would like to see how, I would like to see how people rated those because when I'm looking at, I'm looking at, at, at those, it's just, no, the math just doesn't add up. Math just doesn't add up. Not when, where there's a complete lack of experience. A complete lack of experience. And this board, which is a very new board, so we have to rely on the experience of an outside counsel. So a new board who is still learning is going to get an attorney who has to learn how to do the job. And I find that, I find that disturbing and I find it unacceptable.
The law's the law, whether it's higher education or, now, I under, no, no, well, I understand that it's, that experience is a good thing. And, and I'm, I'm not really defending anybody here because most of them I didn't, most of firms I didn't like anyways. So by doing research on them.
If you need brain surgery, do you go to a foot doctor?
Well, I don't know, that probably wouldn't be a good idea, now, would it?
They're both doctors.
Yeah. Well.
Like I said, we've had all those resumes for weeks and weeks to go over them. And I went over them over and over. I also made calls and got to other attorneys I knew, to judges I knew. And they all spoke highly of
Well, yeah, because the area of expertise, the expertise of, of the one has nothing to do with education. So if you're not talking to deans or presidents or other boards, then you're not talking to the right people.
Could I talk? Because very seldom I ever do get to.
Oh, you can talk anytime you want to, but the thing is, is if you bring up a point
But here's, here's my point. Here's my point. We, what we got to worry about is what if the college is sued? What if we have, what if, if something happens in the college? Well, I'm more interested right now as dealing with an attorney is had a good litigation attorney. We need a good litigation attorney. It's not, and...
I just want you to know I want to respond.
Are you done, Mrs. Couch?
Pardon me? You, you have, go ahead and have the floor, I've just said...
No, I was just letting the chair know that I wanted to speak after you were done. So when you're done, I will, I'm not going to interrupt you and I apologize for doing so early.
And you are now. Now you have the floor.
Okay. If we get sued, we're going to get sued in an area that is, somebody that is going to be in the higher education field. It is not going to be something that is going to be
Trip and fall.
Right. This is not going to be something, this is something where there's a, there is actually a specialization in the legal community in higher education. And we had four that came before us that had extensive credentials in that specialization. We had one who had zero. And then when we look at the, and when we look at the totals, about 112-point difference between Garin, Lukow, Miller and Dickinson Wright. 112, and 121 points between Plunkett. These guys had extensive, now granted, there are other things, you may not have liked the, the wordiness of Dickinson Wright, but I don't understand what didn't you like about Plunkett that, as a matter of fact, one of the things that I wrote on my notes on the form was they were succinct, which was shocking to me because attorneys do tend to, to go on and on. They were succinct in, in the questions that they answered. They actually answered the questions, answered the question, and then I liked the quality of their answer. But what these totals are showing is that in part A, whether they answered the question or not, not the, whether you agreed with the question, their answer to the question, but whether they answered the question at all. There's 57 points difference between Plunkett and Garin. How, I don't understand that. Didn't, if, and if none of them answered the question, it's incumbent upon us to say, you didn't answer the question. Because you asked two questions, I asked two questions, if, and I, and I had the more, the broadest question, how do you handle conflict? How, they're all lawyers. They negotiate, they arbitrate, or they sue. I mean, that's, that's how they, that's how they, they deal with conflict. But at any point, any one of us could have said, you didn't answer my question. But for four or five of us to have not heard an answer to the question and nobody to say anything, but then, but then mark it the way that it's, that it's obvious that it's been marked. And again, looking at the math, because I can, I know what my scores were. And doing the math, I'm like, okay, wait a minute. No, there's, there's just no way that I'm, I'm giving somebody a four or a five and it seems like everybody else is giving them ones. Okay, and when we're seeing that big a difference, I want to see, I want to see the individual scoring. I want to see the individual scoring. Because if we're getting four or five ones across the board and I'm the outlier on that, then I'm not listening to the right thing or we're opening ourselves up to another accusation of an Open Meetings Act violation. Because those, coincidence does not do this. And no one can defend, to my satisfaction, hiring somebody that has zero experience. We wouldn't hire anybody with zero experience. You wouldn't hire anybody with zero experience. My, my employer, and we have production work where they can be trained in four to eight hours. If somebody comes in with zero experience, they are an outlier. But we're talking about an attorney who will represent this board of trustees. So that's the reason that I, that in my opinion, that we should at least take the top two or top three, argue the merits and then vote to see which one, which one goes through.
So, no one was told the board could engage in follow-up questions. They would ask the questions and they would listen to the answers. And great, and that's what they did. And we speak of zero experience. How many trustees were hired by the voters with extensive higher education experience? I look around. Did any of us serve on a board before we served on a board here?
Yes.
You served on a board of trustees for a college?
No, I served on a, a board of education for, for a K through 12 system. I served on various boards of directors prior to running for this board. So board experience was not something that I did not bring with me. And however, we're talking about the voting public who gave us the responsibility to guide this college properly. And so, say, you know what, you took a chance on me and I didn't have any experience, so I'm going to take a chance on somebody else who doesn't have any experience. That, that logic is flawed, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
On the part A, why should that even be a consideration, part A? That, you know, coming into this, you know, you agreed them on what you think, but the part A, why should it enter into, they're all going to answer the damn question.
They, there were a couple that I, I scored low because they didn't answer the question. They, they
Within reason, yes.
It felt like, it felt like they sidestepped it. And I'm like, okay.
Well, I think quite a few of them did that, but...
You see, I didn't hear that. I didn't hear that. I mean, in, in different ears, we're going to hear different things, I understand.
We're going to have different opinions, I understand.
Yeah, absolutely, we're going to have different differences of opinion on that. But there were, in total, that I heard, there were three questions that got, that got sidestepped. Two by Garin, Lukow and one by Cummings, McClory, Davis and Ocho or Aco or whatever, however you say that. You know?
Well, I, I, my opinion is that part A shouldn't even count.
Well, to me, it speaks to the respect, showing respect for the board. If you ask a question, the question should be answered. If the question doesn't get answered, then to me, it speaks to a level of disrespect for somebody that's interviewing you for a, for a lucrative contract. That, that's where, I mean, that's, that's the way that, in my mind, I went, that, that's got to be why.
So I, I just think it's curious, we've got 415, 459, 444, 468, all in a relatively close number, and then we shoot up to 580. So, does firm number one really walk on water in a way, like, literally, they should have been 10 times better than everybody else who we interviewed. So this math, to me, is really suspect, which is why I want to see the individual scores. I want to see what everybody put down because, and the public should, they deserve to know this as well. Because they'll see how we came to these decisions.
But I will tell you.
And we did it last time and, and quite, and it is public information.
Yeah.
It's foible, anyone can look at it. But at this point in time, that's what I'm saying, we should be extremely diligent with how we're making this decision. And I am shocked that we're seeing numbers like this. how we're making this decision, and I am shocked that we're seeing numbers like this. You know, last time we did it, at least, you know, everybody was fairly close unless they really came and they didn't have the experience, so it went the other way, where then the number would drop down significantly, because we had a firm apply to us that didn't have any of the prerequisite experience. But like, you know, instead of saying, we've got four that all basically came in about the same, and then we had one that had a huge number, and you should only see that if everybody else lacked the experience and one firm had all the prerequisite experience.
Well, I understand that. Part of that difference might be because they went first, and grading them, you know, because I'll tell you, I graded them higher than what I might have should have, but they were the first one, and that's just the way it went.
Right.
You know? And I admit that, but...
But, and that, to me, is, is, is a good reason for us to take, eliminate the bottom two, or bottom three, and then discuss and vote on, on the top two, till we come up with, with one firm. I do, because, because you're right. I found myself questioning that very, their first, you know, and then the last one, I'm kinda like, okay, especially when he didn't give us the chance to ask the questions, you know? I was just kinda like, okay, so, but that also reinforced in my mind, which didn't impact the scores that I gave the first one, but it reinforced in my mind the fact that they all had the questions, which, which we knew, because that was told to us, that they had all been sent the question. They all had the questions, there was no reason for any of them to come through with, with a less than absolutely stellar answer. You know, and, and the one, Dickinson Wright, I mean, and I have to admit, impressed the hell out of me, they were, it was very talkative. But he impressed me just in, I learned, I learned stuff from him, you know, just sitting here, listening to, to what they were saying. I, I, I was like, I didn't, I did not know that, I didn't look at it that way, I didn't think of it like that. You know, the, the first guy, I'm sorry, I just, knowing, coming into this, because this was the conversation that we had when there was an attempt to, to just appoint him as the, as the board attorney months ago, I'm restating now the objection that I had then, and it's the lack of experience. That is my main objective, is, is a lack of experience. I would not hire an attorney to, to represent me that didn't have any experience.
I, I asked my question about the Higher Learning Commission, because the situation in North Idaho, where they actually had a board, you know, come into place, that decided that they were going to basically just eliminate the, the college president, they were gonna fire her, or him, and then basically dismantle diversity, equity, and inclusion. So, without them really recognizing that diversity, equity, and inclusion is a Higher Learning Commission mandate, which is required. So, Higher Learning Commission came in and basically said, you need to straighten this all out. And the, the trustees actually said, you're not gonna do anything to us, you're bluffing. Higher Learning Commission took away their accreditation. So, this is where you actually have to have somebody who has experience working with Higher Learning Commission. Yes, sir?
You're now out of order.
All right, well, I don't think we've really been in order, because this has been more of an informal conversation, and if you'd like to enforce Robert's rules, we can do that. But quite honestly, I think the public deserves to hear our very honest assessment of what's going on, and your conflict of interest trying to insert your attorney into our board. That's a conflict. Anything that you say on this, on this issue is a conflict of interest.
How is it a conflict of interest?
Because you've been paying him. He has been in, in your employ, has he not?
No, he came in because...
So, you've never paid him?
No.
For any of the, so, now, are we going to pay your bill, because you employed him?
Oh, it's on the policy manual.
Did you employ him? Did you have him represent you at any time?
He represented me here, he came at the advice of counsel.
So, you do have a relationship with this individual as personal?
Beyond that, no. We don't get together and golf, we don't get together and play tennis.
For the public record, I say that this is a conflict of interest, and you really should recuse yourself in this situation.
Okay, do we have a motion for a board attorney? Yes, Mr. Reyes.
I move that we appoint Dickinson Wright as the firm for board attorney.
Support.
Do we have a motion? We have a second. Do we have any discussion? Roll call, vote. Sue?
No.
Andy? I would like to say, when, the last meeting that we had when we were all together, I voted no on yours and his, both, right? Because I didn't know if, I didn't know anything about this guy, nothing whatsoever. I did a lot of research, a lot, and I wanted to truly know if Mr. Everman was really in cahoots with him. He is not. Now, Mr. Ever, Everman and I don't get along most of the time, and we don't see eye to eye together, but I've done a ton of research. My two top, I'll say it, I don't care, is Miller and then Cooney, Plunkett and Cooney. Those are my two top. I also believe that we're all gonna hear things differently. I mean, all of us are. If we all voted for whoever you guys wanted, you would be happy. If you voted for who they wanted, you know, it's, it's, we're never gonna make anybody happy. But I, I, I did do a lot of research, because I didn't want him to say that I wasn't fair, and, and I made sure that I checked everything out. I think that, you know, everyone deserves a chance, no matter what it is, but I get what you're saying, but what I heard was that he has, you know, he's done this a lot, and, and that, that's why I was okay with it. But like I said, my top two that I chose, you can look at mine all day long, I don't care, is Miller and Cooney. Those are the two that I, that I chose. I didn't care for the others. The last one, nobody even got to read the question whatsoever, it was just super fast, so here we go, and then the one before that was pretty much the same. I just want you to know where I'm coming from.
Mr. Freeman?
No. Or yes, I'm sorry, for Dickinson Wright, yes.
Mr. Reyes?
Yes.
Wendy?
No.
Jeff?
Mr. Chair, make a motion that we engage Plunkett, Cooney?
We have a motion, and we have a second. Plunkett and Cooney, any discussion? Roll call, vote. Sue?
No.
Aye.
Yes. Freeman?
Aye, yes.
Yes. Reyes?
Yes.
Yes. Wendy?
No.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I vote no. Fails. Any other motions?
Well, hell. I make a motion that we appoint Garrett, well, Colin Miller, attorney.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
You have a second.
Just a second.
Yes.
Freeman?
No.
Reyes?
No.
Wendy?
Yes.
Jeff? That's our attorney. Move we adjourn? Any comments from the board? Yes, Mr. Reyes?
I think we did the college and the community a disservice.
Thank you for your comments, so is there anyone else? Mr. Freeman?
Yes, I apologize to the people who voted for us. This board has failed in carrying out the job that we've been asked to do, and I trust that everybody who's diligent and provide feedback to your board of trustees, and let them know really what they thought of tonight's goings-ons.
I'd like to say that, to trustee Freeman...
You don't have to address me, I mean, this is like, this is, I'm not interested in what you have to say.
Oh, okay, I'd like to, I'd like to say...
I'm not interested in what you have to say.
I'd like to, and I'd like you to know, that, you know, that's why you should know, elections do have consequences. They do.
Yeah, they do.
They sure do.
They sure will.
They sure do.
Trust me.
Are there any other comments?
Yeah.
Saying that, the meeting was adjourned.
Don't you show up at a meeting. You don't show up.